It is seven thirty-four P M on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'm calling this meeting of the Board to order. First, I'd like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present. Uh, from the zoning board of appeals, we have Roger Dupont here. Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Venkatesh Holly.
Here.
Adam LeBlanc.
Here.
And Brad Baranowski.
Here.
Good to have you all with us. Um, also with us is Colleen Ralston, our clerk and zoning assistant.
Here.
Have you with us? Um, I don't believe there's anyone else here from the town. Um, then to go through our dockets, uh, for docket three eight, three six, one oh three Thorndike Street, we have, uh, Christopher Alvin.
Uh, here, Mr. Chairman, we've requested a continuance for your knowledge.
Yes, great, thank you. Good to have you with us. Uh, representing, uh, docket three eight, five zero sixty-seven Foster Street, uh, Christopher Di Silvio.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, for, uh, docket three eight, five two thirty-six Glen Avenue, uh, Jack Ajoian and Leslie Mahoney.
Yes, I'm here.
Good to have you with us. Uh, for docket three eight, five, five thirty-four Golden Avenue, uh, we have Rabinda. PC. I know I saw your name before. Uh, and then rep, uh, for three eight, five, six, sixty-three Chester Street, uh, Rashid Fromm and Caitlin Cross. And I believe they're being represented by, uh, their contractor, just, uh, Junior. Believe they're here. So tonight it's. Couple more people in the waiting. So tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with the bill signed by Governor Healy on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, which extended temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. The extension of these provisions allows public bodies to hold their meetings remotely by providing live adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations. This meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast by ACMI. Members of the public who are participating via Zoom and who wish to offer public comment should be aware that they will be asked to provide their full name and address so that a complete public record of the meeting can be taken in accordance with state law. All participants of this meeting are advised that people may be listening to the meeting without offering public comment, and those people are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the Board will be taking up new business at this meeting as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, Massachusetts, discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, an Algonquin word meaning swift waters. The Board hereby acknowledges that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. Uh, so tonight, again, we have a very full agenda. Um, in order to expedite the hearing, I'll be taking, uh, tonight's business, uh, slightly out of the order posted on the agenda. Um, I will be starting with, um, one oh three Thorndike Street because they're going to be requesting a continuance. Um, I think I move on to, uh, Foster Street, uh, then Chester, then Glen, then Golden. Um, and the administrative items will be taken up last. I'm anticipating the first two dockets, um, should hopefully go fairly quickly. And then the others will, uh, probably take around forty-five minutes each. But as I say always, I am not the best judge of how long something ought to take. I cannot provide a definitive time that later items will be taken up. If you're particularly interested in those items, I encourage you to check in periodically so you do not miss your hearing. If your hearing is called and you are not available at that time, we will try you again later this evening. Uh, so before opening tonight's meeting for public hearings, here are some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves for themselves, make their presentation to the Board. I will then request that members of the Board ask what questions they have on the proposal. And then after the Board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the Board would deliberate and vote to either continue or close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. Final vote on any matter before the Board will be taken at a subsequent meeting once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the Board. The decision will then be filed with the town clerk, starting the twenty-day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this Board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Ds in Cambridge by the applicant. So with that, um, open up our agenda again. So we're going to start with, um, item seven on our agenda, which is docket three eight, three six, one oh three Thorndike Street. The Board is in receipt of a letter, uh, from the applicant requesting a continuance. Um, so, uh, Mr. Alvin, um, were you looking? Seeking a continuance? Do, so our next, um, our next meeting where we have items on the agenda currently is July twenty-second?
Um, okay. Would that be amenable? Okay. And I really, and I really appreciate it again. I think the Board's patience with us. We just want to try to create the most seamless application as possible. And I hopefully will be brief, uh, on the twenty-second, so thank you very much.
Certainly. Uh, so the Board has, um, we had voted previously to extend the review period. I believe it now goes until, um, was it one hundred and eighty days, one hundred twenty days past April? Uh, eighth, I think it is, um, just had it. So one hundred twenty days from the April eighth. So that would be four months of Aprils, that May, June, July. That puts us into the beginning of August. Um, would you be amenable to extending that further?
Of course, no problem.
Good. Um. Yeah, so. Um. So if we, so current, let's go. Um, looking at our calendar. Let's say we would extend until, um, Friday, September twelfth. That way we can, if something comes up and we need to postpone again, we can close on the ninth and still, or we can have the vote on the final decision, our second meeting in August. Vote on the final on the ninth and still have time to file, so. Um.
To the applicant, thank you very much.
Absolutely. So, um, I then will move that the Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington extend the public hearing for docket three eight, three six, one oh three Thorndike Street until, uh, Friday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. The second?
Second.
Hanlon, so vote of the Board to extend, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes, and now the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington.
Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, Mr. Holly?
Uh, my name was in color.
Yes, I believe, did you miss a session on this? Are you up to date on one oh three Thorndike?
I thought I was, um.
Then I beg your pardon. Mr. Holly, how do you?
Is it, um, uh, let me go check on this one, though.
Um, well, provisionally, why don't I, why don't I ask for your vote on the extension?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect, and then we'll confirm as we go forward. Uh, so then it would be continuing to Tuesday. Uh, this would be uh, July twenty-second, July twenty-second. So then the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, we move to clo, to continue public hearing for docket three eight, three six, one oh three Thorndike Street to Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M. The second?
Second.
Thanks, LeBlanc. Okay, so vote to continue, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
The Chair votes, yeah, so we are continued on one oh three Thorndike Street.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you. Uh, so with that, um, next item I'm hoping to bring up is, uh, number eight on our agenda, which is docket three eight, five zero sixty-seven Foster Street. Um, this was a case that we had opened in our prior hearing. Um, there had been some discussion, basically the applicant is seeking to put a fence, um, that would be seven feet high at the rear line of their property. Um, they had been advised by the, uh, the building commissioner at that time that, uh, that would not be allowed without a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Um, the Board has subsequently had conversations with the building inspector, and today we got a letter, uh, with today's date saying that they are, um, denying their quest for a building permit for the fence in excess of six feet at the property line. Um, which would then allow the applicant to, uh, to seek to appeal that decision. The, and let me go ahead and bring up this letter because it's a little confusing. Well, this is the letter. Um, does that traditional review regret to inform you, your request cannot be approved as proposed? According to the town of Arlington zoning bylaw, fences that exceed six feet in height are not permitted within six feet of a property line without prior approval from the zoning board of appeals. Your proposed fence height and placement fall within this restricted zone and therefore violate the zoning requirement, cannot be approved. To proceed with your project, you would need to revise your plan to reduce the height of the fence to six feet or less, or relocate it out of the six-foot setback from the property line. Um, so we had discussed this at the prior hearing that we, the Board itself was unable to find in the zoning bylaw anything that regulated the height of a fence within six feet of the property line. Um, so I had wanted to, uh, bring this forward, but to ask the, the lawyers on our Board, um, what their sense was, can we, as a Board, um, where this is a statement from the building inspector, from the zoning enforcement officer, saying that it could be approved by the zoning board, is this sufficient for us to act on this request, or does the applicant need to file an appeal?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Um, as much as I hate to say it, I think that, uh, we need to have it appealed before us. Uh, the bylaw doesn't say that it can't be done without our appeal, without our approval. Uh, I think that, that implicit in the letter is the notion that if we gave the approval, we would give it as a, uh, uh, give it as, as a decision on an appeal rather than a special permit because we decided, decided last time, there was nothing in the bylaw that gave us special permit jurisdiction. Um, so surely the cleaner thing to do, I think, is, is to, you know, have the app, I mean, there's all kinds of procedural rules that apply to permits. And we're pretty strict about them. And then to just sort of make it up as we go along here, in order to make it go a little faster, um, I, it seems to me to be, uh, to be somewhat unwise. Uh, you know, I, I, so I, I guess I think that, that my, my, my impression and what I thought that the advice of town council was, but I could be very much wrong about that, was that we needed to get an appeal from, uh, the, the homeowner and we needed to let it, to be advertised for the requisite period of time. And then we could take it up as a, uh, appeal of a decision of the building inspector, which leads you ultimately to the result because if we approved, uh, if we disagreed with him, then, uh, the fence would be allowed, and if we didn't disagree with him, then it would be, uh, uh, it wouldn't be. Uh, but I'm willing to be persuaded by the others, but it just seems to me that, that when you have a procedure and when sometimes forfeiture of appeal is the result of not following the procedure, for us to sort of just waive it all, uh, doesn't, it, it just is a precedent that, that I think that we may not want to live with down the road.
Dupont, Mr. Baranowski?
I'd very much like to hear what do it Roger and Brad have to say.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I, I agree that this should proceed as an appeal, um, not another special permit jurisdiction for the reasons Mr. Hanlon said. The only quibble I guess I have about it as an appeal is kind of the oddity that it seemed, I mean, what is, would it be appeal, would it be an appeal of a denial of a building permit? I guess I'm just trying to think of like where, where it fits in the statute. What would, what exactly would be, being appealed here? Cause it's not an enforcement action, obviously. Is it just a decision? I just try to get a sense of what this actually is.
My sense is that the Board would make a fight, would need to make a finding that the interpretation of the zoning bylaw being made by the zoning enforcement officer is incorrect in that there is nothing within the zoning bylaw that specifically limits the height of a fence to six feet.
Right, no, I, 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 I agree with you there. I was just saying that, looking at the statute that gives us the, the, our appellate jurisdiction. Um, and just for the record, um, it's forty A, section eight, unless I'm getting that wrong. But, um, it says that appeal to the permitting authority as a zoning ordinance or bylaw may provide, may be taken by any person aggrieved by reason of his inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action from any administrative officer. So obviously, we have an administrative officer here, we don't have an enforcement action. Uh, my question was if this is a denial of a permit. That was one question. Or does it fall under later in the statute where it just says any person aggrieved by an order or decision uh, of the inspector buildings or other administrative official? I'm just trying to see like what, what's, I just want to make sure I'm clear about exactly what the path is for the appellate jurisdiction. I think this is, this does make sense to follow those appeal. I just want to make sure I'm really clear on what the path is on the statute.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Uh, well, it isn't a building permit because you don't need a building permit for a fence. Uh, and it's not really an enforcement action in the sense that nobody's applied for that, that normally is applied by somebody who isn't looking, um, but it is, it, it does seem to me to be an enforcement action in a way, or a permit in a way. Because all, because the, the building inspector isn't doing this, is doing this because he's announcing to the applicant here that he thinks it's against the zoning bylaw. Uh, and presumably will take action accordingly if Mr. Di Silvio tries to build this fence. And whether, where, where that fits in terms of his jurisdiction, in terms of granting a permit, whether it's granting a permit as a formal document or, or granting permission. Uh, it's clear he's telling Mr. Di Silvio that he, he can't do what he purports to do, what he wishes to do. And the reason for it is the interpretation of the, of the zoning, uh, of the zoning bylaw that is set forth in the letter, such as it is. And so I, I would treat it as basically, I'd read permit here as being permission because that is what in fact it is, is permission to do it. Uh, backed up by a threat to take enforcement action if he doesn't do it. And, uh, and, and I think we could proceed, uh, from there. I mean, I, I, it's conceivable that the second provision that, that you read would be, I mean, of being agreed by any action would also be broad enough to, to cover this. Cause the general scheme is to give us at least any action relating to the zoning bylaw. Obviously, we don't have jurisdiction over the building permit, but, uh, over the, over the building code. But the it, it's gotta fall somewhere, right? And I guess the question is whether permit broadly means permission or whether it means a narrow thing like something that that, uh, something that's explicitly set forth somewhere that, 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 uh, is a formal document.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dupont?
So when I looked at the second paragraph where it says that, uh, according to the bylaw, fences exceeding six feet are not permitted, et cetera. So, so when I think of this as an appeal, I think of it in two ways. One is the possibility that there is express language somewhere in the bylaw. And we say, oh, no, we believe that the, uh, building, uh, department is reading that incorrectly and we therefore are going to grant relief and we will, you know, we'll rule in favor on the appeal. So that's if there is express language, and I think we have said that there is none of that. So I think then that if I'm not misunderstanding, what we're dealing with is the fact that there's no express language in the bylaw, which would lead us to the conclusion that that six-foot restriction applies. And therefore, if the building department says, well, you can't do it, we're not saying we think you're reading it incorrectly. I guess maybe more what we would be saying is there's nothing in there that says anything about it. Therefore, we don't think that that's the authority that the building department has to deny it. And I'm not sure at the end of the day that it makes a difference all that much. And I don't want to make more of this whole situation than is warranted. But I'm, I'm just a little perplexed as, you know, what the, what the basis is for us theoretically to be able to say, uh, no, uh, you know, that's wrong. We are now going to grant the appeal and allow you to go at six feet. So for me, again, it's just, is there express language in there? We're saying we don't agree with your interpretation. Are we saying that there's no language whatsoever that allows you to actually, uh, restrict this? And I, for me, at least conceptually, that's important in making a ruling.
The only restriction I have found on the height of fences apart from in specific parking regulations where they're talking about specific screening requirements, um, is at the, within five feet of the end of a driveway, a fence can be no taller than two and a half feet, which is obviously for vis, for traffic visibility and pedestrian visibility. That, that's the only thing outside of a specific parking regulation that discusses the height of a fence.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Um, I was, spent a lot of time trying to figure out what can be made of section five point three point twelve B, which we normally think about in terms of, uh, that that's the two and a half feet, uh, side. But in the beginning, the, the way in which that is introduced is a fence, hedge, wall, sign, or other structure or vegetation may be maintained on any lot. Period. Provided that in the front, excuse me, provided that in the front yard area, no such structure or vegetation shall be over two and a half feet and so forth. Um, and the limitation about for visibility of driveways is phrased here as an exception to a general either recognition of or grant of, uh, the authority to have a fence wherever you want. It's particularly, so here it's not, it's, it's not even in the front yard, right? So the, the exception doesn't apply. And what does seem to apply is the first half of that sentence, which says it may be maintained on any lot.
Right. There are, so a fence is a structure and there are restrictions on structures, but specifically in the R one and the R two, it talks about an accessory building. It does not talk about an accessory structure. Whereas other sections talk about accessory structures, so, um, it's, unfortunately, I this is very perplexing because it's, I think, I think we all have a sense that we would like to not have this become as, as large of an issue as it has already.
Right.
Um, but I don't think we necessarily have a path forward that doesn't unfortunately involve making it bigger still. Um, my sense and, um, would need to bring Mr. Di Silvio into the conversation, um, I've what it looks like we would need to do, and I, again, I apologize for how long this is taking. Um, is we, the Board would need to re-advertise this hearing as an appeal as opposed to just being a request for a special permit. Um, and that, Ms. Ms. Ralston, I believe if we were to do that, could we have Mr. Di Silvio on, on our July twenty-second?
Yes. I can, um, advertise by this Thursday and he would be all set for the twenty-second.
Would that be acceptable to you, Mr. Di Silvio?
Sure.
Okay. Um.
To Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hanlon?
I wonder if in the immediate time we, just to make us all feel more comfortable, if, if we could ask Mr. Chapa to explain this letter a little more. And I mean, he's clearly saying that he believes that it's the zoning bylaw, something in the zoning bylaw that, so there is reading behind that of some sort. And, you know, we could just say, well, if it, we can't find it. Or we could ask him what he thinks it is, in which case we could say, well, we don't agree that that does it. Uh, but it would sort of get the conceptual issue that we spent a few minutes talking about out of the picture because he, he, he clearly is saying that some interpretation of the zoning bylaw supports his decision that this isn't allowed.
Right.
And that's what, what it is that we're here to review is that, whatever, whatever that contention is, that's what is the issue for us.
Okay. All right, so we would, Ms. Ralston, if you could go ahead and re-advertise, um, this hearing as an appeal from the decision of the building inspector. Um, and the appeal is filed essentially within the day or two of the issuance of the letter, which is well within the thirty days that are required. So there's no issue, uh, with the timing on this. Um, with that, the, uh, we would be looking to continue our hearing, uh, to Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, at which time, um, it will be heard as an appeal as opposed to being heard as a special permit. Um, Mr. Silvio, do you have any questions?
Um, other, none, other than is there anything required of me in the interim between now and July twenty-second?
Not at all. I'm afraid this is all on our side.
Okay. It's been very fascinating. I appreciate you hearing me and, um, I guess I will see you again in July.
All right, so with that, uh, I moved to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, continue the public hearing for docket three eight, five zero sixty-seven Foster Street to Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M. The second?
Second. Second.
And Hanlon? So with that roll call vote of the Board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
And the Chair votes, yes, we are continued on, uh, sixty-seven Foster Street. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very welcome. So with that, going back to our agenda, I would like to, uh, move now to item number six, which is docket three eight, five, five, sixty-three Chester Street. Um, so just a, uh, before I have the applicant introduce themselves, um, this is a slightly different kind of case for the Board. I know this came through initially as a request for variance. Um, but the request is specifically being made under, um, the Americans with Disabilities Act, um, as a request for a reasonable, uh, modification, uh, to meet a specific need of the applicant. Um, and there is a specific path for Boards like ours to, uh, address a request like that. Um, so specifically, um, the applicant has been working with the ADA coordinator. Um, so specifically, um, the applicant has been working with the ADA coordinator for the town um to make sure that the requested accommodation meets the criteria for a reasonable modification. Um, and the board would need to determine uh whether the person has a disability-based need for the modification and whether the modification requested is reasonable. Um, and it can only be found to be unreasonable if it would cause an undue hardship or fiscal or administrative burden to the municipality, or it undermines the basic purpose that zoning bylaw was set out to achieve. Um, so with that, um, we have Junior Kamara, who is the uh, the applicant's contractor. Um, and we have Caitlin Ram, who's with us as well, who's the, the owner. So uh, please introduce yourselves and uh tell us what you're proposing to do.
Hello, good night, everyone. Um, Junior Kamara from Mason Works. So I was, um, I, I'm the contractor for Caitlin Lam. And we're looking to install a 12 by 18 driveways um in the front of the property. Um, the property now does have a driveway on the rear entrance, which is a different street. And this is to accommodate uh disability of her uh mother, which is uh, is living uh with her now. And this is the reason that we submit the application for that uh purpose.
So I'm just gonna quickly find the plan that you had submitted. Um. So the driveway that you're proposing, it's essentially on this, the, this is a through lot that connects two streets. And so the, the driveway that exists now connects on the lower side um and leads to a basement level garage while the Chester Street side um is actually at uh, it's very close to the grade of the first floor of the house.
Yes, that's the entry level of the house um on Chester Street. Um, the driveway on the rear, it's um on the basement level. And there is a certain number of stairs going up uh to a deck and to enter the house.
Um. So members of board, you can certainly see, um, if this came to us as a request, it would have to be a variance because um is not allowed under the zoning bylaw to create a, a parking space within the front yard um of a property. Uh, the second driveway, the board could approve by special permit if the second driveway did lead to legal parking where this does not. Um, and the specific uh reason for this request um is due to the the uh requested use of the first floor as an accessible unit uh for the uh, the parents of the owner of the property. Um, pull up the photos. If you're, if you're seeing the photos now, um so this photo is provided by the owner, so uh this is from the side where the driveway would not be going, the driveway would be on this side. Um, be constructed in the, this, the area here. Um. And then uh, would there be a, a ramp constructed to the front entrance? Is that the intention?
Yes, we have to do the curb cut and that sidewalk reconstruction in order to rent into the driveway.
Okay. Um. And the purpose of this drive, of this parking area is specifically for the, the use of the um the applicant's parents who have um a mobility issue that would require um the need of uh, of a flat accessible parking space leading to an accessible ramp um and then access into the, the house, which would not be able to be accommodated at the rear due to the, the number of steps. That correct?
Oh, yes, that's true.
Yes.
Um. So the only question that we had, that I had had um in regards to, to this application, um so this, the request is specific, is specific to um to residents of the house who have a specific need. Um. In the future, should the needs change and the accessibility is no longer required, would the applicant be willing to um make modifications to the parking area so that it could not be used as parking in the future?
Um, I guess I can speak to that. Um, so we currently have uh two elderly parents living with us. Um, my mother, who's 90, and my father-in-law, who's 89. Um. So we would definitely be willing to do that. Uh, but we also foresee staying in the house for ourselves for a long time. Uh, and after seeing what our parents have been through, uh, we, we think that it may, it may one day also be, uh, be useful for us as well. So um, but if there was a problem, you know, for the neighbors or the neighborhood or the city, the, the town, then um, of course, you know, if we don't, we're not using it now for the current time, then of course we could, we could change that.
Okay. Are there, uh, I'll go ahead and stop the share on the photo. Um, are there questions or comments from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Holly.
Um, the section, I, this is, I feel like this has come through, not, not a part of ZB, it's one of the projects that I was involved with, wherein the Mass General law, chapter 40A, section three does allow, but it is only for the handicapped access ramps, right? Not, not per se a driveway um that lets the, you know, uh, no dimensional requirement would apply for the front side and, and rear. So in this particular case, it is not the ramp that is of issue, it's the driveway that is the issue here.
But in this case, it's not actually coming through 48, it's coming through the ADA. So it's coming through an application of the federal law at the state level. Um. And so the, the guidance I got from the ADA coordinator from the town was that the um an applicant is able to work with the, with the town's ADA coordinator to request a reasonable modification to the zoning bylaw um to meet a specific need. So uh, unlike, unlike a variance where it would need to be an issue with the land, this allows for the, for a board to make a decision and to make a modification um specific to, to an individual's need. Um, and that's part of the reason I was sort of asking about the, being able to make it nonusable when the need is no longer there because this is not a path to something that's supposed to trap, supposed to stay, follow the land, it's supposed to follow the people.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Um, so it's kind of the way I was thinking about it from the way you just said is that we have the ability to vary the zoning bylaw under a, a variance, and that's what section 10 is all about. And this is really preemptive federal law. So it requires us to make a modification, it requires somebody in the town to make a modification of the bylaw that's specific to a particular case. Um, so in that sense, it's more like a special permit than a formal variance uh that would accommodate a person with, with disabilities if it meets the statutory standard. And I guess the reason why we have any jurisdiction over this would be that we're the body that normally has to apply the bylaw so that um you need, if you need to have a modification uh in this way, we're the body you have to look at, at least for something that's generally within our jurisdiction. There, there would be special permits, maybe that, that the ARB would sometimes do. Uh, but that's why we get to do it. So it's sort of like a, you think of it as a kind of a federal variance that is based on disability and is personal to a particular situation. Uh, and somebody has to make the decision. Uh, and I guess, I mean, if, if we feel that we have the information that's necessary to, to make that decision, then probably it's, we should, we should go ahead uh and, and, and make it. There seems to be a general consensus within the town that we're the right person, we're the right body to make the call, and there's no obvious competitor in that regard. So I think that that's a way of saying that we're, that we should be able to go ahead and do this, and the source of our authority is the ADA, which is not usually our source of our authority. But uh, federal law is what it is, and it has the relationship to state and local law that it does.
Thank you. Anything further from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, uh, Mr. Holly, you want to go first?
Good, yeah, no, go ahead, um, Bernowski.
Was Mr. Bernowski?
Oh, I was just gonna ask what the, what the driver was gonna, what the material the driver was gonna be constructed out of, that's all.
Ah.
We're gonna be building that with the pavers.
Okay.
M- Mr. Chair, um.
Yes.
I, I agree with Mrs. um, with Pat Hanlon there. Um, but um w- with the federal, uh, I just, I just still wanna know, I, I don't know what the, wouldn't the ADA apply to a public space instead of a private lot? Um, it's, I'm just curious to know what would be the.
That's my usual, that's my usual understanding of the American with Disabilities Act is it has to do with places of public accommodation. Um, I am taking direction here from council that this is what we're to be doing, so. Um. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't know better in the which title of the ADA this falls under.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, the town has an ADA coordinator whom, you know, you've talked to sort of late in the game, you had a chance to, to talk to. Uh. And I would think that the question, I mean, I agree with Mr. Holly that, that it is a question to, it, it's one thing to say just in general that the ADA provides such and such and such and such, and we have that assurance from town council at a very broad level. Um, but I don't think that we have the ability to quote chapter and verse on the statute to understand exactly what it is that we're supposed to, and the town is supposed to do. On the other hand, somebody whose job is to be the ADA coordinator should have all of that at his fingertips. And I wonder if in an abundance of caution, we ought not to ask for him to provide in writing uh that what he's working on, he's, he's, I gather, working on exactly the same question. And I'm a little perplexed as to how this all, this all works out. But surely it would be useful for us to be able to say, as we do with the zoning bylaw, we wanna, we something, you want to get a determination under section six or a variance under section 10. And here I don't think that we have the ability to do that. We're just, we're operating on the basis of hearsay.
Yeah, so I did have a conversation um with the town's ADA coordinator this afternoon. Um, he is, there's a sort of accompanying paperwork that he's working on as well um in regards to uh requests for a reasonable modification. Um. I had asked him if he felt it would have, it would be proper for the, this board to continue until that document is prepared. Um, and he asked if we could proceed uh without the, you know, the, the rest, without the documentation that he is preparing. Um, but if the board would be more comfortable in being in receipt of that uh before the board proceeds, that's certainly something that you know, that we could do. Um, but really all we're being um, you're being asked to determine uh if we feel that such a modification would be reasonable. Um. And so if that's something that we feel comfortable doing, we can absolutely, I think we have the authority to do that this evening. Um, but if we're not comfortable making that kind of a determination without further input from um uh, from the ADA coordinator, we could continue until such time as we have that documentation. I just wouldn't want to, you know, drag this out too far.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dupont.
So I do believe that in or out of an abundance of caution, it's a good idea to have the documentation. I really do think it's important for us whenever we make any decision, and especially if it's novel, that we understand sort of what the um, you know, what the path was that we followed. And I'm not entirely clear. I do believe that it is true that ADA takes priority over whatever rules we have under the zoning bylaw. But I'd like a little bit better clarity when it comes to that so that we can say we've gotten from A to B to C. So if other people are more comfortable just proceeding, I can live with that. But my inclination is to want to have a little bit more specificity.
Yeah. Um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I just add, just what, just add one more addition to that? Specifically, it would be good to know exactly what the statutory basis for our jurisdiction is in our, in our statutes. Because federal law can preempt our statutes, but it doesn't create, it, it doesn't create us. And so it would be nice to know exactly, you know, does this fit in our variant, where exactly does this fit?
Right.
For our jurisdiction.
Right, and not to sound, Mr. Chair, sorry, um um, not to set a bad precedence in a way as well, not, not in that sense, you know, not to sound cynical there. But um, just to um, could set a wrong precedence if the A to B to C, like Mr. Dupont pointed out, isn't clarified. That also helps us in further cases down the line. Um, and would agree or second with what Mr. Hanlon says that if more of these come to our desks, then uh, could it be codified or could be looked into the bylaw as well?
So with that, um I think it's a good time to go ahead and take public comment uh before we um move on, before we, we discuss this further. Um, so with that, um I'll now be opening the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand. It should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the Reacts tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the chair, asked to give your full name and address for the record, and given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. Once all public questions and comments have been addressed, uh, the public comment period will be closed. So with that, are there any members of the public who wish to address this application? Again, this is dock at 385663 Chester Street. Uh, we have Mr. Steven Moore.
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Steven Moore, P. Moore Street. Uh, I would ask the chair, in his conversations with the ADA coordinator, uh, when, when he or she suggested that you proceed before his documentation was complete, did he give any reasoning as to why that was?
I think he was looking to um, to expedite the process and not to hold it up unnecessary, what, in what he felt would be an unnecessary fashion. He, he stated that he had no objections to the request and was just working through the, the paperwork.
Well, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. It sounds to me like the applicant has also been in regular contact with the coordinator. So it sounds like uh the processes are all just moving forward in kind of formal fashion. Um, my, uh, I, I appreciate Mr. Bernowski's comment regarding the materials. I'm glad they're gonna be pavers. I wanna make sure that they're permeable uh to allow for rainwater to move through them. I'm assuming that is the case. Um, cuz that's kind of important. Uh, and uh, lastly, I would, I, I guess I have a question about the point that you brought up, which is the requirement that the applicant kind of, I, I guess, almost return it to its current condition when the need goes away. Do I understand that? Do I, do I understand that correctly?
So the request would be that it not be usable as a parking space um after the, the use that was authorized by the um, by the reasonable modification had expired.
And what does that entail?
So for this area, I mean, liter- if they were to put a fence, I think, between the sidewalk and the
Mm-hmm.
and the pad they installed, it would be a patio in the front yard. Um. Or, you know, or the, take out the curb cut or some, you know, just something that would make it so that it's not readily usable for. Um, because if if the period for the reasonable modification has expired. It sort of leaves a sort of gray area where that you now have a nonconformity that was created in a fashion that. You know, for a purpose that no longer exists.
Right, and I I, Mr. Chair, I would ask the follow-on question to what would be the situation? If this uh parking space was approved and constructed and such, and then one year later. House gets sold.
My understanding from the, and I would, we'd need to talk to council about that. It's not a modification that follows the property, it's a modification that follows the people, so it would not. It would no longer be a valid parking space um on the land.
Does that, uh, Mr. Chair, get moved with the deed?
Um, that is a fabulous question that I don't know the answer to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hanlon.
Um, I I think, and I think that town council agrees with this, that. That is a separate condition, we can, we can. We can make it clear at the outset that the condition is only valid as long as the need exists. Which here I would say was the need for the the parents who have the disability. I mean, other people in Arlington may eventually have a disability and may need something like this. But it's not a reason to let them build a uh parking lot, hopefully many years in advance of that need. So uh, but it's like a special permit. We we ought to be in turn determining what the proper scope is of a finding of reasonable need. We presumably can, and I I understand that's the position of the town, can ask for reasonable. You know, impose reasonable conditions and and certainly making it clear that this is only, this is only good as long as the need is there. Uh, is something that we can and should do, and I think that we should do it explicitly rather than. Uh, leave it up to somebody later to figure out.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Hanlon read my mind, that's exactly where I was going. So thank you very much for that, uh, and also, lastly, just as a um, a uh engineering question. I assume such a parking pad would have to have a retaining wall on the downhill slope. And I would hope that the applicant would bring such design plans to. Uh, you yourselves, as well as vet them with a neighbor on the downhill side of the slope. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any other members of the public who should address this application? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment for this hearing. So as we have been discussing, uh, what the board has before it is a request for a reasonable modification. Uh, to accommodate uh a resident with a disability at at the home, uh, sixty-three Chester Street. Uh, the request would be to have a parking space constructed in the front yard facing Chester Street. Uh, which would normally not be allowed under the zoning bylaw. The, my sense from the members of the board is that the board would prefer to continue pending getting additional information. From the um. The ADA coordinator uh with some, with specifics regarding um. Uh, where the board's authority lies uh to make this decision. And to get more information um from the ADA coordinator as to. Their sense as to uh why this would be a reasonable modification. Am I hearing that correctly? So that being the case. Would like to try to expedite this as best as we can. And not overburden ourselves on July twenty-second, so um. Think I would recommend, if the board is amenable, to. Putting this on our agenda for July eighth. Um, I know we currently do not have any business on July eighth, I'm very hopeful that we will be voting on a couple of decisions on July eighth. But. Are there any objections uh from the board for moving this to July eight? See, now I'll ask the applicant, um, this ramp, does it, is it, would it be acceptable to you to continue until July eighth? So that we can get better information from uh the ADA coordinator? Okay. Alright, so then, are, is there any other information that members of the board feel we need to? Get ahead of the July eights, I have down that we need to find where our authority lies and we need to find uh. Get the information on reasonable uh modification from the coordinator, is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
This may need, not need to wait, but, excuse me, Mr. Moore raised an issue about whether or not the pavers would be permeable. And uh, I think that we we need to have the record say one way or the other what that is. We could probably do that in the next ten seconds, but if we don't, we need to, by the time we make a decision. I mean, this goes to what a reasonable condition.
Mr. Kamara, with the pavers, you would imagine setting them in a perme- permeable fashion?
Yes, so we can certainly install permeable pavers that required and um, you know, coordinate that with the homeowner.
Okay.
And there will be a retaining wall, I believe, as well.
Okay. Great, anything else? Saying none, I moved that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, continue. Public hearing for docket three eight five five, which is thirty-four, uh, no, sorry, wrong number, beg your pardon. Uh, that the zoning board moved that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, continue the public hearing for docket three eight five six sixty-three Chester Street. To Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty PM. I think, Mr. Hanlon, uh, so there, uh, voted the board, uh, to continue, Mr. Ha, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
The chair says yes, so we are continued on uh sixty-three Chester Street until Tuesday, July eighth. Uh, thank you so much for being here and um, we can wrap this next sessions, thank you. So with that, going back to our uh agenda, the next item up is the item number eight. Uh, which is uh docket three eight five zero, oh, no, not that one, sorry, uh, docket. Three eight five two thirty-six Glen Avenue. Um, this is a hearing that we had opened at our prior session. And we had, there were cer- certain questions uh that were set forth for the board to try to get some answers to and for the applicant to get some answers to. Um, aware that this has considerable uh interest from the uh community. And so um, with that, I would uh introduce Leslie Mahoney, who's the architect for the applicant. And to tell us uh what they have been looking at.
Hi, good evening, this is Leslie. Um, if I could share my screen.
Mr. Ralston, can you go ahead and allow that?
Do that, okay. Um, one thing, um, before I talk from the screen, I had uploaded a letter from the highway supervisor. To the portal, um, did you see that?
We did. The disposition of Emerson Road.
Right, so that's just declaring that Emerson Road here is indeed a private road. And that the maintenance of that will be um by the homeowner here. So um, our applicant, the owner of the land now. Will indeed fix that road, um, take it down to the driveway. Probably, you know, further is on along the property there, it can be used by others to walk through. Um, and it will be used by these folks as their driveway access. So hopefully that clears up the private way issue. Um, the next issue, we talked about permeability. And I did some calculations that are shown on this fifth page, I'll show them to you. But basically, um, we are adding less than three hundred and fifty square feet of impervious surface. We're taking away the footprint under unit two, taking. Um, well, we're adding the footprint under unit two and we're adding the driveway. But we are taking away more than that, by taking away the space that was here in the front that was paved. And taking away the accessory garage that's on the side. And I can show you those calculations here. Adding the driveway, adding the unit two footprint, taking away the paved, the garage. And that is two hundred and seventy-seven of impervious surface being added. So that was the second issue, and then in terms of um. The project itself, we were talking about um, this wall here. And how much shared space there was between unit one and unit two to make it indeed a duplex. We have shifted, the project shifted unit two a little bit forward. So that the shared wall is now seventy-five percent of. Unit two's available wall. And to me, and I think the definition of substantial is seventy-five to eighty percent of something. So to me, it seems like it would be substantial. And hopefully to you as well. Um, we have changed the open space a little bit so that both spaces conform. This front space is as prior. And more than seventy-five percent of it is less than eight percent grade. And then we have turned the open space behind unit one, seventy-five percent of this is now. Within eight percent grade. And we will have a small wall on the side here in order to accomplish that. And this is the amount of open space required for unit one. At eleven hundred and fifty-six feet. So those are the significant changes that we made. Um, I also wanted to open this up to Jack Joyen. To talk about a few of the comps that we were talking about last time in terms of units that are side by side. Do you wanna share those, Jack?
Mr. Joyen?
Yes, if I can.
You need, you need to share with Mr. Joyen?
I do.
Do, um, Mr. Ralston, if you can go ahead and give Mr. Joyen the ability to share.
He's all set.
Awesome, thank you. So um, Mr. Dupont, last time. Had had some questions about how the square footage was calculated and to pull some comparables. And so looking at uh some of their comps, we found seventy-five Franklin was one, uh, fourteen sixty Edith and one twenty-nine Appleton. Uh, these were both, or all three of them were um either single family to duplex uh conversions. Or um, two-family to two-family. Or two-family to duplex. And walking through it, uh, I looked at the existing lot size. Uh, the original living square footage, this is just what was available online uh per real estate records. The new living square footage, which would be for the sold uh condos combined. Um, for for the four of these, as or or listed um, listed, listed uh square footages. And then I took a, took a cut of new versus old living square feet and new GFA versus lot size. Uh, color coded here is highest is green, average is, you know, this this shade of green and then highest is this shade of green. Um, it's not for good or bad, but just to understand the extremes here. And so when looking at. Lot size, Glen Ave has the highest lot size uh considerably. Um, also had the highest original uh living square footage, the twenty-seven oh seven does not include the garage. When looking at new living square footage, uh, we're below, we're, we're um, we're neither the highest nor the lowest. Um, and when we look at new versus old living square footage, as well as new GFA versus the lot size. We're below the averages compared to the other comps, uh, given of how big of a lot we have. And so, Mr. Dupont, I just wanted to um, kinda uh, ask you if if that, if my interpretation of your question was correct. Cuz prior to that, uh, Leslie had shown um, our new square footage with the exist, with compared to the total GFA of the existing. And so we went based off of the living square footage and pulled some comps to compare.
Mr. Dupont?
Uh, yes, I think I find that that's very useful information, I thank you for that.
Mr. Joyen, I I just ask if uh, at the end of the meeting, if you wouldn't mind just forwarding a copy of that to uh. To Ms. Ralston, so we can have it in the record.
Okay, sure. Uh, and just a note, I, I was not sure if Edith had the garage in the living square footage. Um, this seems to be a uh first floor garage with a driveway in the middle. And so no living space on the first floor, so not sure if they included that. It does seem like a pretty big unit, just a disclaimer, I'm not sure the accuracy of this, just because it's a pretty unique uh comp.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mahoney, was there anything further you wanted to add?
Um, no, that's really it for tonight, I mean, we made some minor modifications to the floor plan, but I don't know that you care so much about those.
The board also, we we had a little bit of homework, um, so I did reach out to the the town engineer. On a couple of questions, um, he did confirm that Emerson Road is a private way. Um, and as such, uh, is. There was, the maintenance is the responsibility of the budding uh party. Um, and so uh, Mr. Joyen is is perfectly able to uh to improve the condition of the road. However, uh, because it is a, a way that is accepted in the town. Um, they do need to provide, you know, access for people to continue to use it. Which they have stated they would be doing. So the next question was in regard, there was a question raised by some of the others about the sewer system in the neighborhood and the capacity to. Um, to accept the additional uh flow from the site. So they had said that they were not concerned about the sewer system. They said they could believe that it could be, that it could handle it. But he, if the board was concerned, the board could condition that um, the uh, that the applicant. Provide calculations to to verify that they they could meet the the load, that the. That that make calculations to provide what the additional load would be and that would then be, need to be reviewed and accepted by the engineer for connection. So um. That was their condition on that, and then um. In regards to storm water, they thought the easiest thing to, for storm water was to have them abide by the the major storm water permit regulation. Even if they don't technically trigger the standard three hundred and fifty square foot threshold. They just thought that that was a good way to make, if there were concerns, especially in in this neighborhood, that uh, that's something that the board could condition. And that would give the engineers, uh, the town engineer the ability to review um, the storm water plans and confirm. That uh, they would not uh create any undue um, impact on the neighborhood.
So let me understand that, you're, so are you basically saying? So let me understand that you're, so are you basically saying that a stormwater management plan would be required?
So what I'm saying is that the engineer said if the board had concerns about stormwater, that it would be within the board's, um, ability to require, to condition the permit on the, um, on the provision of a stormwater plan. So it's not, they're not requiring it. They don't have the authority to require it, but it's something that they said to the, they had mentioned both on the stormwater side and on the plumbing side, if, if the board had specific concerns about those two, uh, those two items that the board could consider a condition, um, requiring engineering division review of those two figures.
Okay, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, is there precedent for that? Like, like Franklin or any of the other?
None of the Franklin, I think had to have stormwater, but they were over three hundred and fifty square feet. I don't think there were any that were under three hundred and fifty square feet. That's the board has requested have specific stormwater review. Um, and I am unaware of uh, our board requiring a, uh, the plumbing calculation review by engineering.
Okay.
Um, so looking down my list, um, the only other question, um, that had come up last time was a question about the width of the driveway that's being proposed, making sure that that conforms with um, the requirements of the bylaw to bylaw for residential. It's, it's a maximum of twenty-foot width on the driveway. So we just wanted to make sure that the driveway that's being proposed conforms with that requirement.
Hey, Leslie, you're muted.
Oh, Leslie, I'm muted, mute.
It's currently shown at, I think thirteen and a half feet or fourteen. And it goes up to an apron right at the garage doors. The garage doors have actually been moved in closer together so that the driveway would not have to extend all the way to the edges of the house. And, um, but there is a possibility that we might make it twenty feet at the driveway's edge. At the street's edge at Emerson Road. Do you want to see that plan again?
Um, I don't think we need to at this time. It's it certainly, if, if there was an issue about the width of the driveway, it would come up when the building department does their final review on the
Right. It's definitely not going to be over twenty feet. It's not the intention. We don't want it to be over thirty, twenty feet ourselves.
Right. And it's listed on the plans, I believe, as being, uh, pervious surface, correct?
Um, well, i- in my calculations, it is still impervious.
Okay.
In the calculations where we're adding two hundred and seventy-seven square feet total.
Yeah.
That is if it were impervious surface.
All right. So would you say that your current intention is that it would be impervious?
If it's required.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. LeBlanc?
Uh, I was just looking at the diagram of the section at unit two and the recently provided updated drawings. And I think there's been a change in the average grade that now makes the basement a story.
Oh, um, yeah, let's look at that.
Cause then that would put us at three stories.
Let us look at that. That is
On that, uh, yeah, the section area.
Yep, right here. So, um, yes, this grade has been dropped to ninety-two, seven, five. The average, my understanding is that for it to be a cellar, then half the height had to be below the average grade. Which it is. Half the height is four foot ten and three quarters and the average grade is a below, is above that.
Yeah, it's in the definition of a story. A basement shall be deemed a story when its ceiling is four foot six or more above the finished grade. Cellar should not be deemed a story and attic is not deemed a story of unfinished, not. So I believe we usually take that from the average grade to the underside of the ceiling.
Believe that's correct.
Which you had provided that dimension before and the documents, which was four foot, three and a half inches in the previous section that you provided in the initial application. And your average grade moved down by about a foot. So that would put it over the four foot six and then be deemed a story.
I believe, so I was looking at the definition of cellar versus basement. And then that sellers do not qualify as being a story.
That's correct. But in, in the definition of a story, it provides definitions of, or clarification of when a basement would be considered a story.
But this is a cellar, not a basement.
But the definition of a story is it's a basement when the finished ceiling is four foot six above the average grade or more. And in this case, we, if we're gonna say, if we're just comparing here, you would be at five foot, roughly five foot three or so. Cause your, your average grade changed by about just well, under a foot, but I think enough to put you out above four foot six to then be deemed a story.
I understand what you're saying, but I was using the definition of cellar versus basement. And then it says that a cellar shall not be considered a story in the definition of cellar.
So cellar is a portion of a building partly or entirely below grade, which has more than one half of its height. Measured from finished floor to finished ceiling below the average finished grade of the ground. Um,
So more than half of this height is below the average grade of the unit. So it does meet the definition of a cellar.
But it also meets the definition of a basement to be counted as a story.
Yeah, technically it's not a basement, I think is what this Mahoney is saying. I do agree that if it was a basement, it would meet, would potentially meet the requirement. Um,
Um, I'd have to go back and find where it said a cellar is not a story.
No, that's in the definition of, of story. It says a cellar is not a story.
Okay, well, there it is.
Yeah.
Um, so I believe this meets the definition of a cellar, which makes not a story.
Well, then it seems like have a conflict going on in the definitions.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I think that final decision would again be made by the building department. I think that the board can, can as a part of its decision, um, state its understanding of what that means as to whether or not this would qualify as a story or not. Um, but I think it could be, you know, if the the calculation of the average grade needs to be pretty careful because of, you know, we're, we're coming very close to where all these numbers converge. So I think, um,
Yeah.
We wouldn't
We're just trying to
Be very careful to make sure that, that the requirement is met. This is for unit two, correct?
That's right. In, um, in going out to the site and taking careful measurements, we're just trying to manipulate the site at this side as little as possible. And really work with the backyard that's there. And so it just came to our attention that the grade was lower at this corner. If we needed to raise it, we could. But we would prefer to work with the land as it is. And it happens to be this height and this height.
So it's, in relation, this, the section in relation to the garage. Um, so is this the, is this a portion that has the garage in it?
That's correct.
So are, are the dri, would the garage doors be parallel to the, the drawing as we're seeing it? Or would they be on the side?
They're in front of this cellar, basically.
So that whole side is going to be exposed.
Yes, as in this elevation here.
Leslie, you're not sharing.
There you go. Yeah, I think you would need to, you would need to be careful about how you're calculating the, the average grade, um, just to make absolutely sure that because you do have one side that's entirely exposed that the, the weighted average of the ground at the building would still qualify correctly.
Yeah, I calculated it the way the building code requires.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. LeBlanc, was there anything further?
No, I think as long as we're fine with it being considered a seller or leaving that determination up to the building inspector. Um, I think I'm good. I think we have a couple of things then that we might want to be addressed at town meeting next year. Ben's heights and, uh, maybe adjusting the definition of a cellar. I'm gonna write that, those two things down.
On that note, um, for open, open usable area, Mr. LeBlanc or Mr. Chairman, uh, in the definition, in the zoning bylaws, it does not, um, specify shape. It just says minimum horizontal dimension could be twenty-five.
Correct.
Has to be twenty-five feet. So would a, you know, um, pentagon or a, some sort of trapezoid work as long as any dimension is greater than twenty-five?
So we have interpreted trapezoid. So if you have a trapezoid, that's fine. Um, but the basically the portion where we typically run into problems is, is like it's a backyard and then it turns down the side yard and the side yard is not wide enough. So that wouldn't count. But if you have a wide open rear yard area, um, typically as long as the, you can fit a twenty-five by twenty-five within it. Um, trying to think of what we, usually it's good until one of the, until the perfect, one of the perpendicular dimensions gets below twenty-five feet.
Okay.
So it can be sort of a bigger trapezoid space. But it does, you can't sort of carry it out into small triangles.
Of course, yeah. Okay. And given the trapezoidal shape of our lot, we would actually have more open usable area for unit two.
I believe you would, yeah.
Leslie has stated. So with that definition, we, we would get a considerable amount more.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Questions from the board? Seeing none.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I, I Uh, sorry, Mr. Baronowski, please.
I just have a quick question on the substantially all. Um, I was wondering if the applicants had found any other precedent where we had said that seventy-five percent suffice for substantially all? Cause it sounded like the applicant, if I'm understanding correctly, was going more off of, um, their sense of ordinary usage of substantial law, um, rather than what past decisions we've made. So I just wanted to, I just want to be clear on that.
Sure, yeah. Mr. Baronowski, I remember it was last call, uh, Mr. LeBlanc had, uh, made some references and some others had also made some notes. Uh, I did do some homework. I can share what I got. Um, so I looked at seventy-five Franklin, cause that was something that, um, Mr. Little Lang, uh, pointed out as a potential comp. Uh, that's twenty, it's a little bit different, but the, the min section adjoining is twenty-three compared to the body, a max body of twenty-eight. That's at eighty-two percent. Um, there was a reference for Park Street. Um, one on Russell. And, um, here, the, and, and so this was on the corner of Park and Exeter. This was interesting because it had pop outs in the front that were pretty substantial. Uh, so the adjoining is similar, uh, just like Franklin, but it has pretty considerable pop outs. I could not find drawings for this. I don't know how, how much they are, but top down, um, you could kind, trees are in the way, but you can kind of get an idea. Um, there was what else did we have? Oh, there was sorry, I'm missing it. Oh, yes, this was another one I saw on Park Street. Um, this one has what I believe is a front to back multifamily. And so, um, not sure if that applies, uh, as a comp, because this would be a duplex versus multifamily. Um, and then there was this, which I think is a top bottom two family. Um, which had some pop outs, but again, I don't have any dimensions. Um, but I, I leveraged some Google satellite and these were all the ones I could find that could be used for comps. Um, our lot is unique in that it's, it's a trapezoid shape with, uh, a long right rear corner. So kind of limits us to what we could do.
So, so just to be, just to make sure I'm understanding the presentation correctly, Franklin, the Franklin Street one was the one that had the only one you found that was both a duplex and you had specific, you had the actual specific, um, percentage on, right? Or did, or did I miss something?
Yeah, this is correct. Yeah.
I just want to, I just want to make sure I understood correctly.
Yeah, sure. I did just in terms of trying to understand def, by definition, in, based on zoning precedence, um, can you guys read this? I can zoom in a little bit. Based on zoning precedence, uh, in Arlington, Massachusetts. And this was, you know, AI, um, search. Uh, substantial definition is at least seventy-five to eighty percent uh, of the height end up must be shared. We're a hundred percent of the height and seventy-five percent of the width. Um, and, and some context there is, I think what the board wants to avoid is, is two units merely just touching at the corners. Um, and also for there to be no overhang of one unit over the other, uh, in terms of a duplex such that there must be a shared wall. Um, and defining the separation between the two units for, for most or of their full volume. So, um, that's kind of what we were going on. Um, but otherwise some other contexts, you know, substantial, I think, uh, you know, ten to twenty feet is clearly substantial, but in, in terms of zoning codes, I think at least seventy-five percent which we're at, so.
Thank you, Mr. Baronowski. Anything further?
No, I just wanted to see, um, to the extent to which we were, we would be breaking new ground on, on that particular point. That, that's all, that's all I was asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Seeing none. Go ahead and open the meeting for public comment. Um, this is a refresher, uh, public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand. Should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of the public who wish to speak can digitally raise their hand using the button on the react tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, you may all star nine to indicate you'd like to speak. You'll be called upon by the chair, asked to give full name and address to the record and given time for your questions and comments. Please, uh, all questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. And once all public, uh, questions and comments have been addressed, the public comment period will be closed. So with that, um, the, uh, first name is Dr. Brooks.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, my name is Dr. Daniel Brooks. I'm at forty-five Kimball Road. I'm one of the butters. Uh, as the board is aware, the budding neighbors of thirty-four, thirty-six Glen Ave have submitted a joint statement asking you, the zoning board of appeals, to deny this special permit. To recap for the record, what was happening here, the petitioner requested that the zoning board issue them a permit under five point four point two B, section six for a large addition. Four point two B, section six, for a large addition. In short, the bylaw defines a large addition as no alteration or addition, which increases the gross floor area of a building. By the lesser of seven hundred and fifty square feet or more, or fifty percent of the building's gross floor area. Unless the addition is constructed entirely within the existing foundation or the Board of Appeals, this body finds that the alteration is. Uh, in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. The project we are discussing increases the gross floor area by a hundred and sixty-five percent from a total of four thousand, four hundred. And seventeen square feet, of which approximately only two thousand, seven hundred square feet are currently living area, to seven thousand, three hundred square feet. In addition of nearly three thousand square feet, assuming we are using the more generous numbers. And will be built entirely outside the floor print of this existing foundation. The reason we're. Are here discussing this at all this evening is because this project does not even come close to complying with the town's bylaws. As a result, the developers have resorted to asking for an appeal in an attempt to bypass our laws and circumvent the wishes of our community. The numbers make it very clear that there is no way this project can be considered a large addition according. The definite, uh, can be considered a large addition according to the definitions in the bylaw. This project will be more accurately described by anyone looking at it as an entirely new building, because that is exactly what it is. As a result, the developers have now started referring to their project as a duplex in an attempt to try to add some legitimacy. Or perhaps obfuscate the unchanged fact that they still have wildly exceeded the permissible amount of expansion for a large addition. That said, the project also does not meet the town's definition for a duplex, which reads. A building containing two dwelling units joins side by side or front to back, sharing a common wall for all or substantially all of its height and depth. A brief glance at the proposed site plan is sufficient to see that the new building only shares perhaps fifty percent of the existing structure's wall area. Before extending past it, merely touching at one corner before clearly making the shape of an L. While the bylaws may lack a precise definition for the word substantial, the phrasing was clearly meant to refer to. Both walls of the building sharing all or most of the same wall, not just one of them. Furthermore, no one would say that covering about half a wall would be substantially all of it. This proposal is certainly much larger than a large addition. It is also not a duplex that can be thought of as a large addition. But perhaps most importantly, is absolutely not. In keeping with the character of the neighborhood and is certainly not in harmony with the other structures in the vicinity. These facts, as well as some other points, have all been laid out for you in a letter submitted by Gina Sander and signed by twenty abutting neighbors. And counting, all of whom are calling on you, the board, to deny this appeal. I'd like to end by pointing out that we are a relatively small neighborhood, but we are welcoming, accepting and diverse community. It should be very telling when a neighborhood full of people who are extremely supportive of each other. Including when it comes to doing renovations and expansions of homes in our neighborhood, that we are all universally against this project. The difference here is that this is not one of our neighbors, but a project whose goal is to make as much money as possible at the expense of our neighborhood. The town should help us prioritize the interests of our neighborhood over the goals of this individual who care only about maximizing their financial gain. And who has demonstrated zero interest in our, our community, or how our community will be impacted by their actions. To be clear, not only does this project not have any support from any of its neighbors, we all actively disapprove of it. A fact well documented by letters from our community that have been entered into the public record. We, the people you are tasked with representing, are now calling. On you, the Board of Appeals, to deny this on our behalf, using our laws to protect us and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks, um. Next on the list, uh, is Vicky Crossen?
Hello, uh, you can hear me, yeah?
We can.
Perfect, uh, hi, I'm Vicky Crossen, I also live at forty-five Kimball Road, the abutter on the rear side of the. Uh, proposed expansion. I have several different points, um, that I wanted to make about how this will impact not only our, uh. Our plot, but also the neighborhood and, uh, environs around it. Uh, so the first thing that I wanted to come back to was, uh, Emerson Road. So for the last four years where I've lived beside the road, I can say with absolute certainty that the road has seen very little use. Most of the usage that it did see consisted of people attempting to drive down the road. And then suddenly realizing that they couldn't get either up this cliff or. That, you know, they, they fell down the cliff and had to continue forward, uh, this is. Absolutely not a path that we want to support motorized through, through a, because people can only get out. Past our section of the private road, um, is it okay if I share a couple of pictures?
Ms. Ross, can you go ahead and. Grant permission to show some images?
You are all set.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, so these are a kind of a series of pictures, starting with the end of the road near our driveway. And going forward towards the Glen Avenue side. Uh, so as you can see right here, there's about a car length of paved road, and then the, there are. Traffic cones which have cut off traffic through this road for more than a year. Uh, you can see right after the traffic cones, it goes from paved to unpaved really quickly, the path narrows, um. You can see that it is very much a walkway, it is very much not a road at this point. There's greenery coming in from both sides. Uh, and although it may be in their rights to completely tear this up and repave it. I argue very strongly that that is environmental damage to the slope right here and could impact the water runoff down this way. Uh, it continues to be unpaved. And then at this point, it just sort of becomes like a scree slope of large rocks. Uh, you can see at the top, there is this precipice that sort of drops off, that cars cannot get over, uh. Even really large trucks with high clearance, like landscaping trucks, bottom out scraping their way down this. So even if this was smoothly paved over, it would, one, not remain paved over without significant work. And two, force people out beside our home, because that's the only way, you have to go down the hill to get out. Um, and. You can see that this really rocky slope to the unused, uh, driveway or garage right here. Uh, is, is really just a mess. There's all sorts of debris showing that nobody has used this garage in a very long time. Um, I'm gonna stop real quick. So I want to make it clear that we really do not support any sort of motorized access to this road, because it will really negative. Negatively impact our home. Um, it's, since this road has been closed off, it's really serving the community better than it has in, in years that we've been here. Um, that said, I think that it would be reasonable to have like a, a community-wide, neighborhood-wide discussion. Of Kimball Road and Glen Ave and Rangeley Road adjacent to this, so to figure out what to do with it. Uh, that would be conserving the access that has, that, that currently exists and talk about any repairs in the future. Um, so the, the next issue that I would like to mention. Is, uh, concerning the groundwater and drainage in the area, so. Our property, uh, forty-five Kimball Road is at one of the lowest, if not the lowest, uh, plots in town at the very. Bottom of this huge significant hill from all directions. Uh, our home is a hundred years old and there has never been water in our basement before. Uh, it's finished, we would like to keep it that way, we would really strongly prefer to not have water come into the basement. Uh, the reason that we're concerned about this is that while the applicants are claiming that they maintain the same amount of permeable area. And stay within the, the stated limits. The location of that area is not in the place that it used to be, uh, so there is going to be impervious ground. Uh, right on this hill, which is going to potentially have negative ramifications about how the water is coming down. Off of this area, which I think we did mention last time. Uh, the current layout has a really large permeable grass area between, uh, the current main structure and parking area and the border of our property. Which is where the lowest part of the land is, so this grass is really helping to absorb the runoff from the existing impermeable structures. And uphill direction that goes uphill, uphill, um. So altering the water draining system poses a really significant risk to my property and the other properties at the very bottom of this hill. The last thing that I wanted to bring up is more specifically about the, uh. The, um. Sewage slash stormwater issue. I'm going to share another, um. Another couple of things, uh, to sort of make my point, uh. The previous town engineer, Wayne Choi Nar, had spoken with us at length about how this was an overused. Uh, frequently flooded area, he came up to visit it, we had discussions about how to remedy it, none of which were practical because of the. Uh, intersection of the state-owned parkway with the bottom of our road. Um, so I want to demonstrate through a couple of videos I took, uh, just how bad the overflow and combined sewage. Running down this road is, so this is directly in front of my house. And you can see that this manhole is just geysering up, and this manhole is overflowing sewage. So this, uh, is obviously kind of a concern for us, the, you know, dozen kids on our street. We would like to not have toilet paper and tarts floating down, uh, and adding more, um. Restrooms to the area is going to significantly impact this, um. To go on to the next one, you can see the water running down from there. Past the base of the street. Uh, and you can really see just the huge amount of water that does go through there, uh, and then. I wanted to show this at the bottom on the parkway where cars get flooded and they have to leave, and this is all sewage, like combined. Storm sewage output, so when these cars get trapped, everyone goes and looks because they have to wade through sewage water to get out. Um, this is particularly impactful because we live adjacent and, and the Glen. Uh, property as well, lives adjacent to the, uh. Marsh, Meadowbrook Park, which is, uh, right along the other side of Mystic Valley Parkway. So the red circled, uh, area here is the Glen Avenue, the plot that we've been discussing. Uh, and when there is a storm, it bringing this sewage and the stormwater down. The, the pink is coming down my road, the blue is coming down from their road. And all of it comes, combines together and runs down towards Mystic Lake. Uh, it also goes through this protected wetland area. Uh, and I did want to flag that there are particular sections of the bylaws in Article Eight about wetland protections. I believe these apply to areas that are, uh. Within two hundred yards of abutting a wetland and have a square footage of more than six thousand feet. So this property is significantly less than two hundred yards from this, uh, protected wetland area. And is significantly over six thousand feet, even with the most generous reading of their, um. Their, their analysis of the new floor plan. So I think that it would be really irresponsible to. To approve this without doing some sort of environmental impact study, uh, Millbrook, which runs. Along down there to Mystic Lake, which is where the water flows down, has for years had the lowest. Score in the Mystic River, uh, water quality report. Last year, it was a D plus and it is only getting worse, uh, it is an F for this, this most recent year, twenty twenty-four. This is the lowest in the entire Mystic River report, uh, it is a significant issue and. Adding more sewage to the area is going to make it worse and worse and worse, so I strongly recommend. Uh, looking into the impact on drainage, on the lake, on the road impact. Uh, I, I think there are a lot more things to consider. Thank you.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Um, next on our list, um, is Andrew Helger.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Can.
All right, yeah, my name is Andrew Helger and I live at thirty-two Glen Ave, directly next door to the proposed project. I'd like to state my opposition to the current design and raise a few questions for the board's consideration. The current plan appears primarily aimed at maximizing square footage for resale value, without regard for the scale and character of our neighborhood. The proposed buildings would dwarf other recently renovated homes in the immediate area. This project would replace two modest twelve hundred square foot units. With one thirty-eight hundred square foot unit and one newly constructed thirty-six hundred square foot townhouse. An increase of over two hundred percent in square footage of living space. Does the board believe such a dramatic upscaling aligns with the character and intent of our zoning bylaws? Which are designed to preserve the existing scale and cohesion of residential neighborhoods? My second question is, does converting a two-family home to two separate large townhouse-style buildings truly qualify as an addition? Or does it constitute a fundamentally new development? I oppose the current plans and respectfully urge the board to consider whether approving such an outsized project. Would set a precedent that risks undermining the integrity, livability and established character of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Helger, um. Next up, uh, is Louis Dalvin? Louis Dalvin, are you? You might be on mute.
I'm, I'm trying to, uh, manipulate it, I think I got it.
You have it, yes.
Okay, I, I, I want to add only a few points or questions to those.
I, I just need your name and address to the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Louis Dalvin, thirty-three Kimball Road, we are a backyard of butters of the project. Um, my wife has put a lot of work into this, uh, researching all of this and she's published, um, you know, a letter to you that. Uh, I hope will get your full attention, but I just want to ask a few questions. Based on what we've heard tonight, uh, in addition to what my neighbors have so eloquently said, which I agree with a hundred percent. Um, the new driveway, does that lie on the same ground? As the accessory garage to be demolished? It's not clear from the drawings where the existing accessory garage lies relative. To the new driveway, because in the calculations for, uh, the, uh, permeable versus impermeable. Surfaces, it deducts the volume for the drive, the garage. And if it's lying on the same plot of ground as the new driveway, it shouldn't be deducted.
Well, it's that's it and then added back in.
Mahoney, if you could, if you could wait till address, please, thank you, um. Mr. Dalvin, did you have other questions?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, I just want to weigh in on the substantially all point, which, um. The, the submission by the applicants is basing their percentage of seventy-five percent to eighty percent. On the wall of structure number two, not the wall of structure number one. So the percentage has become quite a bit smaller if you're comparing the proportion of shared wall to that of the original. Existence, structure. I, I think that that's a misinterpretation, a misuse of the bylaw, and I think that that essentially by itself. Uh, should grant, not, and refuse to grant this application. Um, and that is all I had to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalvin, um. Like, the next on our list, uh, is Julie Horvath? Horvath, I lost, did you wish to address the board? You're on mute, your hand just went down. Julie Horvath, if you would like to address the board, you just need to unmute yourself. Sorry, you're still muted. Ah, there we go. Ms. Horvath? Afraid we're not hearing you. Oh, and now you're muted again.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you, yes.
Hey, I apologize, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's staying cool in this beautiful weather. Uh, thank you for taking our questions, I appreciate all of our neighbors weighing in, um. Over these last two meetings, I just wanted to say, my name's Julie Horvath, I live at thirty-seven Kimball with my husband, James D'Amico. And we also have our neighbor Butch Edgecombe here from, um, number forty-one Kimball. So a couple of points on, um. So a couple of points on, um, Mr. Adrien's comps. Uh, the comps that he did pull up. I think the closest comp would have been Franklin to us. The other ones really are not, um. Applicable in my opinion, because one is in East Arlington, way across town. The other one on Edith is also across town. Uh, there was one Appleton, which is in Arlington Heights. At the top of Arlington is probably the highest point, right? Um, and we're at the lowest point. So those, those comps really aren't very comparable. And probably because there haven't been many situations like this. Um. And being in real estate, I've been in real estate for twenty four years, residential, working with home sellers and buyers, not developers. Um, so I have seen a lot of these, um, things happening, but not quite like this. Uh, one thing that we were concerned about is that we wanted to ask actually the question of the foundation wall. Because that is abutting our property. That's directly behind our fence. So we mean it. We wanted a little bit more clarity on that, um, as well. Uh, another thing we wanted to, um. Mention as I took my notes. They mentioned that if there were, this were to go forward, I believe somebody, um, had mentioned, uh, one of the people on the board. Uh, that there should be a condition on the, on the request, uh. To have an engineer, an engineer review, uh, of the condition of the sewerage situation. Adding more bathrooms and kitchens and more people and all of that. So how is that regulated? How would it be regulated in the future? How would we as homeowners be, um, you know, um, reassured? That this would be in constant review because of the past situations over the last twenty years that I've lived here. Um. And I am still concerned about the impervious situation. Okay. Because we right now are looking at a beautiful lot of ten thousand square feet of practically grass. The yard is now, I've never seen anybody play in that yard. Not that it matters. I mean, it. Um, but it's a beautiful piece of grass with that, you know, we don't, you know, obviously we don't want to look at concrete and other. Other, um, impervious, um, you know, structures. So I think, do you guys have any?
Yeah, I have something I want to add. So this is James D'Amico, Julie's husband at thirty seven Kimball Road. Um, we are on the lower side of the valley of this, um. Area of the neighborhood. And, you know, we look up the backyard and I see a lot of blue sky. And I fear that this building is just going to gobble up all that airspace. The video that, um, was shown earlier of the sewer flowing over. By Vicky, that sewer cap comes flying off and goes airborne three or four feet and falls about six feet away. Town has to come by and put it back together. So, um, being the lowest point in Arlington. These things have to be addressed and we are. Absolutely opposed to this thing going forward under the specs that are being provided. And, and for the sewer director to say that he believes in outside of Vicky's comments about. Uh, the environmental impact, he believes that this additional gray water and sewage would have no harm to the area. Just doesn't make sense. And what is our recourse a year after the construction is done? And I have water in three or four basements around here that historically have had none for over forty years. Thank you.
Yeah. And then one last comment, if you don't mind. Um, we are again, our neighborhood who has. I think almost everybody on Kimball, um, has done some kind of major renovation, whether it be kitchen or basement or. You know, whatnot. I mean, we've all been very cooperative in that, obviously. Um, so we're not, we're not opposed to a homeowner doing a project. Um, this is just definitely. Uh, a much bigger scale than anyone, um, should really pass. Um, so thank you very much for allowing us to speak.
Thank you very much. For seconds. Mr. Dalvin, did you want to address the board for a second time?
Yes, I just, uh, realized there was one other point I wanted to make. I appreciate your hearing me out on this. Um, to my understanding, the ruling on, on private ways is that it's the abutters plural. That need to be, uh, involved in any improvement or, you know, maintenance of the, of the way. And the abutters in this case are, uh, Dan at forty five Kimball, whom you heard from earlier and his wife. The applicants, but it's a third abutter, which is the DCR. Are they not involved in any of this? That was my question. Do they need to be consulted on how, uh, Emerson Road impacts their property, which is the other side of Emerson Road?
Great. Thank you. Was there anything further?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Mr. Steve Moore.
Oh yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve Moore, uh, Piedmont Street. Uh, Mr. Dalvin does raise a pretty interesting question about the VCR being in the butter and perhaps needing to be consulted, but, uh. By that being said, I have to, uh, I have to admit I was, a picture is worth a thousand words and Ms. Cross's presentation in that video is significant. And I know that, uh, with increasing a number of, uh, serious downpour storms, this is going to be a more common. Occurrence in the parts of Arlington where the systems overload like that. Um, and I'm wondering. Someone did raise an interesting point about, I guess it might have been Miss Crossen about the distance from. The, uh, the watershed zone, the protected areas and the Mystic Lake. Uh, and the, um, the outflow from this condition when it occurs. I'm wondering if the applicant has had to or is required by, by the rules to approach, um, the Conservation Commission? Maybe the applicant already knows the answer. I'm not sure.
I could certainly look into, into the question, um, if it's within their, their, uh, routine jurisdiction or not.
Right. I know that with the DCR roadway there, it does make it, uh, a little more complicated, but. I just, I just know there's all sorts of rules about distance from wetlands and that sort of thing. And I don't know if it's two hundred feet or two hundred yards for the. Uh, uh, upland area, resource area. I'm not sure how that works exactly, but this may be, may be covered in there. So I just, good, sounds like you'll, uh, you'll consider that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this hearing? Seeing now I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Got a long list of questions. Um. So starting, uh, starting from the top, um. So there's a question about the definition of a large addition, um, and whether this qualifies as a large addition due to the, due to the size. So this is precisely why there's a section on large additions in the bylaw, um, is to require that, uh. Anything that's larger than seven hundred fifty square feet. Um, is deemed to be, you know, fairly sizable and therefore, uh, should have the input of the community, which is exactly why we're. Why we're doing this. Um, there's no cap on the size of a large addition, um. Apart from other zoning requirements, um, or, uh, you know, in order to, uh, try to accommodate. The, the concerns of the neighborhood and to, for the other conditions that are required, uh, under a finding of large addition. Um. There, the, the term appeal was used as well, um. Just from a technical standpoint, this is not an appeal. This is a special permit request, uh, special. There is a provision, uh, five, four, two, V six, which is the large addition section, which allows, uh, the granting of approval by a special permit. Um, an appeal is, it just technically, it's a different thing. So I just wanted to be very clear that this is a, a special permit request. It's not a, an appeal. There's a question about, uh, whether, um. This, uh, this, uh, the creation of a second unit adjacent to the first, uh, current double unit, whether that, um. Is an addition or whether it's a new development. Um, the interpretation from the zoning, uh, from the, the zoning official, which is also the, um. The building inspector is that, uh, where you're maintaining at least fifty percent of the existing structure. Um, the fact that you're adding on to it does make it an addition. It's not, um, a separate structure. So from that technical. Perspective, it is considered, uh, by the building department to be an addition, um, which is why it qualifies as a, for a hearing as a large addition. In regards to the question about the shared wall, uh, the harmony with other things, that's something the board's going to need to discuss. Um. The, I thought the information on Emerson Road was very helpful. Um, I, I honestly don't know how the, um. How the, certainly that the two residential abutting neighbors would have some, um, impact on the redevelopment of the road. I don't know how the state would. Impact it. Um, I know that the, there is often, uh, difficulty when the. Uh, when a private way butts the town, um, as to what exactly is the town's shared responsibility. So. Um, I'm sure it's somewhat complicated, but I can, uh, I can certainly look into what, what that would be. Um. The underground water, um, and the drainage issues, certainly the board will need to discuss that and, um. How that would impact, um, the decision and possible conditioning, uh, the same with the sewer questions. Um. And then let's see, um, there's a question about the, um, whether this is a new. Drive, whether the new driveway is in the same location as the current garage. I'd asked Ms. Mahoney if, uh, what. How does, how do those sort of overlap? Is it in the same location? Is it in a slightly different position?
Uh, it's in a slightly different position, but, um, I mean, we, we took away the garage, but we added in the whole driveway. So it's, you know, I think it's done properly. And if I can also say that. Adding with the driveway. Being of an impermeable material, we're only adding two hundred and seventy seven square feet. If we made it out of impermeable materials, which we would be willing to, I'm sorry, I'm saying this backwards. Right now it is listed as being. Impermeable in the calculations. And in that calculation, we are adding two hundred and seventy seven square feet to the entire permeability of the whole site. Impermeability. If we were indeed to make it of permeable materials. We would be adding four hundred and two square feet of permeable materials to the property. So making it much better than it actually is now. And we would be willing to do that.
Okay. In, in regards just for the, the location of the existing garage. So if you're facing, if you're on Emerson facing the garage, is the driveway slightly to the right of that, slightly to the left of that?
The driveway.
Closer to the abutting neighbors or farther from the abutting neighbors?
Um, a little bit away from the neighbors, but it's very close to where the garage is.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, there was a question about the. calculation of the percentage shared between the two buildings, whether. It should relate just to the position of, of building two or bit, or number one, that's something the board's going to have to discuss. Um, there's a concern about the, the foundation walls and sort of where that runs, um, something we will. Need to come back to. Um. Having an inch, having engineers review, uh, both the stormwater and the sewer, um. The, some of the conditions with regards to permeability, um. The, the question about the butters, uh, to a private way and how, who's involved in that decision. Um, and then the, the question about the, the flow to the Mystic Lake and the question about the, about Concom. And I know there was a question asked about the inland wetland district, um. Which is a provision in the zoning bylaw that town meeting voted to remove this year because it's, um. It's not. There's not a good enforcement mechanism for it and the, the Concom does a much, much better job. Of dealing with environmental issues than this board ever could. So, um. Both this, it would definitely be worthwhile conferring with the conservation agent to determine if there's a, if Concom has a role in this or not. So with that, um.
Can I just say two things?
Ms. Mahoney?
Um. One thing is that, um, a good portion of Emerson Road is actually on the property. And if we were to improve it just to the driveway, a lot of the pictures that were shown were from the Kimball roadside, the path. We have no intention of turning the path into a road. I don't even think that's on our property. Um, but what abuts the property to the driveway would be improved. But again, a good portion of it is actually on the property itself.
Okay.
Um. Somebody asked a question. Oh, I don't know. Never mind about that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just, um, share a letter from the previous owner regarding Emerson. On that topic, um, which was also posted to. The. Order.
Okay.
Finding the share button. Cool. You can see this, um. I can either read it, but I, I just want to, uh, go over the key points. Uh, the owners were, you know, previous owner was there for over thirty years. Uh, been in the family for, I think, close to seventy. Um, the, you know, at one point in time, there was dead end signs at the top of both Glen and Kimball. Um, there was a, at one point in time, there was a private way sign at the corner of Glen and Emerson, which would be, uh, the driveway to the garage. Um, the previous owner had made repairs to the asphalt. Um, and Emerson was supposed to be used for the two properties for garage access, not dedicated foot access. So it was. Not a path. It was, it was a road for access to the garage. The town trucks and delivery trucks destroyed Emerson over the years. It was used as a cut through, especially the trucks and, um. From her recollection, uh, there was not a lot of traffic cut through, uh, in terms of cars. Um, you'd get the occasional lost vehicle, um. But there was minimal traffic and that would be avoided if the town replaces the dead end and, uh, private way signs. Um, so just some mitigation options there that we could do. And just want to clarify that the private way would still be accessible to the neighborhood. It's not going to be exclusive in any way.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
If foot traffic, not to cars.
Correct.
Yeah.
So for the board, um. So this is obviously a request for a large addition. Um, the requirements, the, the required findings that the board is. Specifically needs to make for a large addition is that they need to be able to find that the alteration or addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. Needs to consider dimensions and setbacks in relation to abutting structures and uses. And it needs to consider conformity with the purposes of the bylaw. Uh, and those are in addition to the standard findings. Um. In addition, on this one in particular, I think the board needs to, um. Discuss the definition of a duplex and whether. This does in fact meet the definition of a duplex. And if board does not feel that it meets the requirements for definite, for. A duplex, I think the board needs to be much more specific about what. Would therefore, um, meet that definition. Um. So just in review for a duplex. Definitions related to dwellings. Uh, so duplex dwelling is a building containing two dwelling units joined side by side or front to back. Sharing a common wall for all or substantially all of its height and depth. That is, in which no part of one dwelling unit is over any other part of the other dwelling unit. A duplex shall be considered as. A duplex shall be considered as one principal building occupying one lot. For the purposes of determining yard requirements. So the the question that had been asked, uh, while we were, um. Receiving testimony from the public, um. Where this is more sort of an L shape rather than, you know, a long bar, does that still meet the. Substantial connection requirement of a duplex, or does it? Or does it not meet that that threshold? I don't know if we can necessarily read into the fact that the. You know, the building department did pass this along to the zoning board as a request for a special permit. I'm assuming that they. Had done some thought along these lines, but I cannot tell you that they did or what that thought may have been. My sense on the, on the duplex definition, I'm. I am not sure that the definition should exclude L-shaped structures from being duplexes. Um, it just, it feels a little overly restrictive, um, and it doesn't specifically say in the bylaw that you can't. Have an L-shaped structure, um. So my, my sense is that the. When you're talking about the substantial connection between the two, it could relate to just the. The narrower of the. You know, the the connection from one structure to the other and the the substantialness of that connection could be limited to that area. Then the question is, is seventy-five percent sufficient, or does it need to be more substantial than that? Um, as the applicant had pointed out on Franklin Street, that was closer to eighty-two percent. Um, in connection between the two, um, that was also a linear building rather than um, an L-shaped building.
Mister Chair.
Mister LeBlanc.
Uh, I agree with uh, your interpretation that I don't think the definition precludes an L-shaped building. I I think that would be too restrictive as we see uh, a lot. There are a lot of very unique shaped lots throughout the town. And uh, a more strict interpretation of the definition might create further issues with other lots around town. And as far as this substantial nature of the connection. I would like to see it higher, um, as to be considered substantial. I think the seventy-five percent that we're seeing here is. Probably the most minimal I would be able, I would be willing to entertain as substantial.
Other thoughts on the board in regards to definition of a duplex?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Dupont.
So this is probably a little bit off uh, topic, eh, but when I'm looking at the definition. Where it says duplex dwelling, you know, at the, at the end sentence, it says a duplex shall be considered. As one principal building occupying one lot for the purposes of determining yard requirements. And I do understand that this is really saying if it's a duplex, it's one principal building. So I get that part of it, but I'm also struck by the argument that a number of the butters have made. That this just doesn't even look like one principal building. And I, and I think that that's not the intent perhaps of this particular definition, but it still. Stands out for me when I consider this whole project. As far as whether or not it meets the requirements of the large addition. And when I factor in that concept of one principal building. Uh, albeit a two-family, but one principal building, this still seems to me. To leave room for the argument that the butters are making, that this is not just one building. It looks like two buildings on one piece of land or two homes on one piece of land.
Mister Chairman, I'm not sure if I can comment or ask a question during this part.
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I I think just wanna, it's a good point, uh, Mister Dupont brought up. But that raises questions about symmetry or requirements regarding symmetry. And architecture would be quite restricted with a symmetrical requirement. In general, um, the lot is unique in terms of its grade and its shape. Um, which is, which kind of uh, shaped the architecture. Uh, for the, for this project, um, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chair.
Mister LeBlanc.
Uh, I just wanted to say that I agree with the last point of from Mister Dupont about. The overall look and if it actually feels like one principal structure or two. Think the way that this is sort of starting to lay out that I don't, I wish it felt more like. A single structure than it is coming off, um. You know, I have other concerns generally as well, but I I wanna keep us sort of on topic and trying to. Yes, so these questions we need to resolve.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Mister Branowski.
I have a question on the common wall, to go back to the common wall on the the duplex, if 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 I may. Uh, on the duplex definition.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I guess. Did make, I just wanna make sure I'm really clear on what the seventy-five percent is being. Of, is that seventy-five percent of the wall? For unit two or seventy-five percent of unit one's wall? Um, because I guess I'll just, I'll just ask, I'll ask that question because since it is an L shape. And it's not just an L shape, it's, you've got overhang on kind of both sides. I'm not really sure. How we're supposed to measure that, and this is just kind of an open question. I wanna make sure I'm understanding. What exactly the common wall that we're using as the reference point here should be.
Ms. Mahoney?
Well, we're seeing the common wall as the wall between unit one and unit two. It is the thirty-foot dimension and we are. Um, overlapping seventy-five percent of that with the main house.
So it's the thirty-foot dimension is the effectively the depth of the.
Unit two.
Two, and of that seventy-five percent is in common with unit one.
That's right.
Okay, and is that just in the linear dimension, or is that in the the two dimensions of the whole surface that's in contact?
I don't understand.
So is it, when you're looking in plan, is it just that there's a thirty percent overlap, or like when you take into account the entire. Facade of the, where the buildings are in contact, including like where the roofs are and things like that. That may change the percentage, so I'm just curious, is it just seventy-five percent based on that one linear dimension? Or is it actually taking into account the full surface area that's in contact?
Oh, yeah, I didn't look at it more than just linearly.
Okay.
That was what I understood the, the zoning code to read.
A hundred percent of the new unit is within the height, and since the. The part of the apex of the A-frame is within. Um, the uh, existing house, uh, it would be a higher percentage if we looked at it. Two-dimensionally versus just front to back.
And as you noted, the, the proposed addition is lower, the peak of the low of the addition is lower than the peak of the house. Do you recall offhand what that difference in height is?
Um, I can look it up. It's substantially lower. I can look.
Other questions from the board in regards to definition of duplex? Question about the, um, are there any concerns? The board about either the location of where the driveway is shown. Or how to access. That driveway from the private way, um. I believe that the applicant is able to repave their section of the private way without. The. Contribution from abutting neighbors. I know, and there's, and I know there's a process somehow in town that if you. If the, if there's a private way and there's a bunch of abutters, that if there's a preponderance of the abutters, they can. Um, work with the town to get the street paved and then everyone shares in. It sounds here very much like there is no intention of this private way being paved beyond. Um, the property line, uh, with the abutting neighbors on Kimball, um, and. Then it it is just that one question about the, uh. What I'm gonna call the MDC, cause that's the name it was when I grew up, um, the MDC's property and how it, uh. What their impact would be on the, the development of the private way, so that's a question that. Needs, I would need to research.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Miss Mahoney.
Um, the ridge of unit two is eight foot nine below the ridge of unit one.
Thank you for that. Is there any, are there any questions from the board in regards to, uh. Potential repavement of Emerson and how it would relate to the driveway or about the driveway itself? I do think as the applicant had noted, making it pervious may be, um. Of additional benefit to the, to the neighbors, um, especially where it would. The project overall would end up having less impervious area than it does currently. Um, and then the next question, there's a quick concern about the foundation walls and how that might affect water flow, um. So I, I know that you're proposing to do some regrading in the rear yard in order to provide usable open space. Um, and so you're putting, you're gonna be putting some obstructions into the, what's currently at the flow of water through. That side yard. I think we had determined initially, so that the existing condition is that there is not usable open space on the property. Um, because of the grades that are there existing, um. And I'm just curious if there was some consideration about. Whether the imposition of sort of graded areas in order to come, to provide usable open space that's not provided today. Whether that might impact the way that water flows on the site, um, and may. Allow water to travel closer to the property edge than it does today. I wasn't sure if you've looked at sort of the, the topography. And the di- difference between what it is today and what's being proposed and how it might shift the flow of water as it's coming on the site.
No, it will flow the same way. We have been looking at that.
Okay. So the, like that upper usable open space, um, that has a wall at the bottom edge of it. Is that going to. Cause water to move to the sides or?
It's going, so we are just, um. Really cutting and filling in the middle.
Okay.
But the rest of it really remains very much the same.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, I just really would wanna be.
And it flows to the same low point that it would now, that it does.
Where's that low, low point today?
It flows to the bottom right of the site.
Okay. But does it flow out onto Emerson, or does it flow onto Kimball today, onto the abutting neighbor at Kimball today?
Toward Emerson.
Towards Emerson, okay, and so you would maintain that flow.
Yes.
Sure, okay. Um, and at our prior hearing and a little bit today, there was some discussion about the, the line of trees. That is along the property line between, uh, the Kimball properties and this property, um. And wanting to make sure to preserve those trees in the critical root zone for those trees, um, is there any. Development that, that you're gonna be doing that would be, potentially have any impact on that vegetation?
No, I mean, we would be happy to plant some low bushes along the fence, but. No, I mean, the branches of those trees have not been pruned on the Glen Avenue side. And they, they hang down onto the property, they hit the ground. So it would be nice if those could be pruned up a bit, but we are, we like those trees. We would prefer those trees to stay there.
Okay.
And we don't wanna do anything to disturb their root bases.
And so there would be no, there's no plans for any construction activities that within, say, ten, twelve feet of the line?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Uh, so then the next question, um, so I have the. The, the sort of the very informative video from the, uh, from the butter about the. The way that water piles up, um, in some parts of this neighborhood, um. I, they had a conversation which they had noted, uh, with the previous town engineer, um. Expressed some concerns. I have a statement from the new engineer that he's thinks is probably fine, but we could. Uh, the, but the board could require some additional review, um, as a condition of approval. Um, I was curious what the members of the board, uh, thought about those recommendations, um.
Mister Chair.
Mister LeBlanc.
I am, uh, concerned about, um. This proposed addition based off of what was presented to us and seeing, um. Seeing the visuals of, of what happens, and I think throughout town, we're seeing a lot of, um. Flooding concerns, you know, we have our other Thorne Dyke place that we've been. Looking at as well as looking to address flooding in, in town, um. You know, cause realistically, this is doubling at least the number of bathrooms. And fixtures in, in this, um, structure, which I think would significantly. You know, it, it will have an impact on how much sewage is coming from this property compared to what the current condition is. Um, so I do have some concerns about that, that, um, you know, I, I. I would like further, um, I would be more comfortable if there was some more, you know, due diligence on that. Given, given the, given the local conditions, um, of what's happening and what we're, what we've been presented. I think it's, um, something reasonable to be looking at.
I guess question I have, Mister Chairman.
Mister John?
Is doubling the fixtures could happen even if this was a, an exit, no additional square footage, right? Of just in terms of, uh, new foundation area. Third addition, we could go top bottom, right? It's still two kitchens. Could still squeeze in the same number of bathrooms, so it, isn't it based on household? Not number of fixtures?
Yeah, I think that's partly something what we would wanna talk to engineers about. I mean, the town had peak. Population back in the seventies, um, where it had at least twenty-five percent, I think still twenty, twenty-five percent greater population than it does today. Um, so at some point in the past, there were a lot more people living in that two-family house than would be living there. So at some point in the past, there were a lot more people living in that two family house than would be living there now. But I don't know how that works into the calculation is, is the you know, is a, is the plumbing calculation solely based on the number of fixtures? Or is it based on the number of occupants or some combination there too? And so that's something I would want to that I think is, is could reasonably just be discussed with the, the town engineer if nothing else to get their senses to, to have them really take a give us a better sense as to what their concerns are for this neighborhood and how they're currently looking to address the, the issue and how this development may or may not impact some of the issues that they're having today.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think as Mr. Mahoney said, if we're willing to make the driveway permeable, which would reduce the square footage by 402 square feet. We're also adding at this point, maybe with the trapezoid shape, maybe 3,000 square feet of open usable space where currently none exists. We are making you know, advancements in that regard there.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Talk about that, talk about that. Fish moon engine review, which has a pervability. Talk about consulting the DCR.
Yeah, and, and regarding the DCR, I thought we discussed that last time and I thought it was your stance that DCR would not get involved in any.
I'm fairly confident, yeah, I'm fairly confident as an abutter, they're not gonna get involved. But I do want to ask the question of conservation just to confirm that there's no that you're outside of the area that would be required for review by the Conservation Commission. You may have already done that, but I just wanted to check with the conservation.
Okay, thank you.
That there's nothing there that we need to be concerned about. Are there other questions from members of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. LeBlanc?
Uh, just wanted to touch on uh, just wanted to kind of come back to where we were on the usable open space conversation.
Yeah.
Cause there is that proposed retaining wall in the revised plans that goes pretty close to the property line. So I think it also ties into the conversation that we had briefly about the impact to the trees along the abutters on Kimball. Uh, cause I think a retaining wall that close to the property line has the potential to have impacts on the trees uh, on that property line.
Do you mind putting up the, um, that site plan again?
Sure. There's the site plan.
Yeah. So I think the, the question is the, on the right edge of what's labeled as a unit one usable open space, there's a notation, there's a wall.
Oh, this wall, yeah. Well, we'll just have to hold it back.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of my concern as well as like which way is the water?
Like this to flow freely here. So we'll hold it back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Really wanted to just make sure that water that's coming down, that comes in contact with that wall, isn't being diverted onto the abutting property that it's being maintained on this property.
We, we thought it was better to adjust the grades here to make it flat. If it's seen as being a negative, then that doesn't need to be done.
Yeah.
We thought that was a positive thing. For the board and for the town.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Have usable open space.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I will add the, it does grade down. The wall is, it's hardscape. It does step down.
Oh, yeah.
I know Ms. Mahoney drew it kind of to the end, but we, we intend to kind of stop it well beyond that and just kind of gradually let it flow back to the existing grade.
Okay. So it wouldn't necessarily go all the way across. It would, at some point it would reach grade and would blend in.
Yeah. And now, now that we have more clarification on the trapezoid shape, we could, we could skew that back corner, still be 25 minimum. But we could make it a trapezoid to maintain that open usable space, but still allowing that flow. And we're willing to work with, you know, um, the water flow to make sure that that's not interrupted. The lowest point in this image is the right corner of the lot. That comes to a, a sharp point there by the driveway.
Have you prepared a grading plan at all?
Uh, we started doing one.
Okay.
Yeah. We started working off one when we were looking at the driveway here in the garage. Have to overlay it again.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause I think it would be informative to sort of see what the existing condition is and then what the proposed condition is. Okay. And then at the last hearing you had brought, you had a, an image or showing the diff, the distance from structures on this property to structures on the abutting properties. We've, uh, we have looked at that. And we've, so we've touched on also today on the, this question about the, whether the alteration is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. Uh, I think from a perspective of uses, it's, it's a two family house and a two family district, even though it, this will now be a duplex and not a two family. It is still that, uh, the, the two residential units together on the lot. So I don't think there's a question about the use. But in relation to its proximity to abutting structures, certainly the, this, the left hand side of the existing building is by far the closest it is to any other structure and the addition is being done on the opposite side of the structure away from that. It is being proposed for the, sort of the portion of the site that has the most land uh, the greatest distances to other properties. So I think as far as the dimensions and setbacks go, it's not necessarily encroaching on other things. I think the, the fact that it is considerably shorter than the current building is definitely something that's helpful. But the question is whether, the question of harmony with other structures as opposed to just its relationships. So I know there's been some, some discussion about that, sort of concerned about the, the way that the the so the techonics of the building and how it how the two pieces, do they look like they really work together? Do they look like a whole? Do they look like they're separate? And I guess I would, I would turn back to Mr. LeBlanc to ask if you have some suggestions or thoughts about what in your mind should or could be adjusted that would potentially make this more in keeping with the intent of the bylaw?
Yeah, I was sort of just thinking about that and, and sort of thinking about that throughout the meeting. One thing that comes to mind is sort of if you were to, let's say mirror the footprint of the current structure and slide it back so that it fits within the setback line. So you're sort of providing another long skinny volume. You know, adjacent to it. And I think it would go better in terms of feeling more like a duplex since they would share, you know, a pretty good section of their, their common wall um, throughout the, the whole length of the building without it having to be an L. Obviously I don't know what that does in regards to the driveway access and all of that. I don't know enough about all of the grading and all of that that's going on to, to get into that right now, but that's sort of uh, where I'm coming from on sort of just a general massing approach to something like this. And I guess the, the question is, was this looked at in initial design or was sort of this L shape sort of decided on early on?
Um, we felt that setting unit two back from the street and um, making it a more it, I mean, it's not as long as the first one was less impactful to the site because it was less high than the first building. And it takes advantage of the step down in the site as opposed to putting one right next to it, which would essentially have the same grades as the first one. And then would just be another tall, tall structure right next to the first tall, tall structure. So we felt that this was less impactful.
That makes sense from a, as an approach. It's a valid approach.
Yeah, it would, it would definitely dominate the curb site of the building if we did side by side. I think Ms. Mahoney did an awesome job with, with how it kind of comes down and uh, tapers with, with the grading of the land. Agreed that, that standing on the street, looking at it would be the visibly the most in, in harmony with the land. Um, I do want to add, it's existing like asphalt shingles. We're gonna kind of bring it back to the timeline of, uh, the existing architecture clapboard and, and shingles. Combination clapboard first level, shingle second level. We're bringing the porches back. So it's not, it's not going to be like vinyl siding or anything like that. It is in harmony architecturally with, with the uh, timestamp of, of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I guess I do want to just add to this too. I, I'm sort of approaching this in the same way from like the previous 75 Franklin of also trying to envision what something done by right could be and how that might feel on the site versus what's being proposed. Cause I, I do think something by right could be way more impactful to the, the site than what's being proposed. So I'm trying to balance that in my mind as well as we talk through all this. I think it's something to consider.
It's a well.
A very large lot that could technically support a pretty sizable structure if you, to be rebuilt, you know?
Yeah. No, it's a I'm glad you brought that up because it the only reason they're before us is because they're maintaining the existing building. If they chose to demolish the existing building, then they just have to make a building that complies with the zoning with zoning and there's no further review outside of the, the building department to make sure it meets the basic requirements of the, of the zoning bylaw. So depth. So then it could be very different in its interpretate, in its, uh, in its origins.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear. Is, is that a formal request?
I'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
So my, my, my sense from the board is that we're not in a place at the moment where we feel comfortable that we have the, all the information we would need to make a decision that we would that we would want to make, that we would, you know, we don't have the, we don't have the required information to, to make an affirmative or a decision or to deny for specific reasons. So I think the, for the board, we're gonna, I think it would be best if we were to continue. Because, because there definitely are some questions that we have as a board that we need to, to delve into. And I think with the applicant, we should make sure that the board is clear with the applicant as to what it is looking, it would be looking for. The items that I have on my list is first is to find out what impact the DCR would have on the develop, on the, on Emerson. The second would be to, uh, contact conservation agent. Find out about if there is any role for the Conservation Commission. Third would be to have another conversation with the town engineer uh, regarding water and sewer, because we're getting two different stories. I just want to try to get some clarification better from the town as to what exactly is going on there. From the board's perspective, are there any questions for inspectional services? Is there any sort of interpretive questions that we have from them? Okay. From the applicant, I think it would be really helpful to get, to see the existing and proposed grading plans. Uh, so we can, because I think the topography is really going to matter strongly. If you wouldn't mind just pulling together just a, the basic plumbing fixture count, just we have, have that information. Be fairly straightforward poll. Again, I'm going to talk to the it's also the question on Emerson. Just sort of can it end at driveway? Are there any issues with that? But certainly, yeah, we, if I think if the Emerson was to be repaved coming from the Glen side, certainly given the condition from the Kimball side, it would make sense that there'd be some kind of established end to the, to the street, maybe, you know, a pair of bollards or something that would, you know, prevent vehicular traffic from going through. And then, uh, as Mr. Joy had noted, that it would probably be helpful to have some signage at the Glen end that notes that this is not a throughway. And hopefully we can that, I, the only part of that I don't know is if there if town emergency services would have any objections to doing that. Um, that's the only thing I would want to verify. And then from the building form itself. So you had no, so you had gotten to 75% of the overlap. I, as you had noted that there was 82% was sort of the precedent at, um, on Franklin Street. It would be helpful to if you could look at what 82% would look at, look like and be able to sort of say whether that causes you know, irreparable issues to the plan or if that's something that might work. Um, I think that would be helpful and Mr. LeBlanc, in terms of evaluating sort of the way that the two portions uh, come together, is it something, is it something that's form based? Is it something that's finish based? What in your mind, what is it more? I apologize. I haven't spent more time looking at that aspect of this project.
Yeah, I guess in my mind, I was just thinking of it literally. I wasn't necessarily thinking of it any other.
Oh, okay.
Cause I, I do, I do think the part that maybe I always haven't been fully thinking about it when we've been I always haven't been fully thinking about it when we've been talking about this is that there is some portion of the. Uh would be the the attic space uh or whatever of the um. The second floor. You know, or or the what that the sloped area of the second floor and how that interacts with the. Flat wall area of the existing structure. Cause I guess I was just thinking of it literally for the for the first floor um and not looking at it sectionally.
Well, I think i- in that case, I think the request would just be. Not to, you know, redesign the project along those lines, but if you. Could just take a look at it and come back with what the impact of that would be um like. Just so that we, because you you've already sort of presented some reasons for why you hadn't gone in that direction, and I think just sort of being able to. Solidify those answers, I think would be helpful to the board.
Okay, if I could just throw some context, um two things, one. If we find if some of the examples I showed today, I like on Park Street and so forth.
Yeah.
I was, if I'm able to somehow measure those to scale and they're at. You know, seventy five percent, would that be precedent? For the kind of the U shape front on a. The one on X hitter? Would that be helpful c- context in terms of a comparable?
Possibly it would be.
Okay. I I can certainly do that.
Okay.
Um, and I do wanna note that last meeting we were at, I think seventy two s percent ish.
Okay.
We did make an improvement to seventy five.
Yeah, okay, I I honestly, I thought it was a lower percentage at the last hearing than seventy two percent.
Yeah, it was closer to seventy. Um, it was, I think it was uh twenty two over eighty, I mean twenty two over thirty and and so we we did make that improvement. And I think I just want to kind of understand what the board's contacts around it is because there are things we could do, right? But at the end of the day, uh. You know, we we do think seventy five percent is substantial and I I just wanna avoid this. Ambiguity of. Uh subjective uh question, because it it did change from the the subjection. Did change from last meeting to this meeting, so I I'd just like to kind of understand what are your intentions behind uh.
In that case, let me. I'll talk to the building inspector in the morning and ask him directly if he has a. Definition of what's suspended of what substantial means to him and I will uh ask Ms. Ralston to get that answer back to you.
Okay, that would be great, because we did speak to the uh uh building department.
Yeah, I'm sure you did, yeah.
Yeah, and and they said over seventy percent is substantial.
Okay.
Good faith, we wanted to make an improvement from our last stand, so we came in at seventy five thinking we had margin there.
Okay, alright, yeah, so let me, let me talk to talk to Mike about that and get back to you on that.
Okay.
And then the other item that I know we had talked about at the very beginning was this. Question about cellar versus basement and as a story, um and I just wanna make sure I have that clear in my mind.
Sure. We we can, we can make that work before we submit the building permit.
Yeah.
And we have the flexibility there to be compliant.
Okay. Are is there, are there any other things that the board would like? To have clarified. Before the next. Hit meeting on this hearing. Seeing none um.
I'd just like to clarify, Mister Chairman. The. A lot of discussion um. And a lot of improvements in terms of being compliant with, I I believe currently. The only thing that we're in violation of uh from a zoning uh bylaw is the. Addition greater than seven hundred fifty square feet.
That's the only thing that you need a special permit for.
Right.
Yeah, it's not a violation, it's that you.
Right, right, right.
You're required a special permit.
Right, correct.
As far as I'm, as far as I know, the only nonconformity is that left side yard, um and there's possibly a front yard setback on. Glenn Street, but I think everything else meets the dimensional requirements of the bylaw.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Great, um. So then the question, so we would be looking to continue um. Ms. Ralston, how's the? Night of the twenty second of July looking, is it getting full already?
So, we have possibly three, definitely two new ones plus one oh three Thorn Dyke.
Yeah, plus plus Foster Street, okay.
Right.
So we're four to five already.
Yep.
Okay. Um. Would you be prepared to be to come back on July eighth? Okay.
Yes, that would be great.
Yes, we could do that.
Alright. So with that, we have our list of things to do um. I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington continue. Public hearing for Doc at three eight five two thirty six Glen Avenue. To Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand twenty five at seven thirty P M. A second. Thanks, Baron Asti. Okay, so roll call vote of the board, we have Mister Dupont.
Yes.
Mister Holly?
Yes.
Mister LeBlanc?
Yes.
Your Baron Askey?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, Mister Hanlon was not present at the prior session of this hearing, therefore he's not voting on this um. Alright, so we are continued on Glenn Avenue, thank you all very much. Appreciate you coming back, appreciate your uh your flexibility in working with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, so this brings us to. Uh item five on our agenda, which is Doc at three eight five five thirty four Golden Avenue. Um, this is a new hearing before the board um. And I would uh. Ask uh the applicants um please introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Good evening, Mister Chairman. Um. Hello?
There we go. Please proceed.
Yes, uh my name is Rabindra, uh Casey. And uh we are proposing uh a new, I like a uh addition on the existing building.
Yeah.
And um I have uh with me here Jeff Moretti from uh Moretti Designs, who is a. Uh project architect. And um uh the project engineer Stamsky and McNairy uh. We have uh here uh from them and Nathaniel Cataldo. Uh as well, so uh probably they can explain better than me. Um. What do you uh want to know from me?
Uh, so it's just like a a general introduction to the project with the proposals, so I don't know if maybe the architect wants to. Show the, display the plans and talk us through it, or maybe one of the engineers?
Yes, uh uh maybe uh Jeff?
And Ms. Ralston, if you could go ahead and give Mister Moretti permission to share.
He is all set.
Thank you.
One second, I'm just trying to.
No worries.
Yep, I'm just trying to upload the uh drawing now.
Well, Mister Moretti is bringing that up, I'll just note, uh so this is a request for a special permit under section five four two B six, large addition. Um, the property itself um. Is a comply, it's a compliant lot, compliant frontage um. The existing lot coverage is well below, uh the existing and proposed is well below what's uh required for the district. Um. But I do wanna confirm uh that lock coverage number, because I think the. There's a, I had a question about the change in the first floor. Um. How much additional floor area was being provided?
It's not allowing me to share the screen.
No. Ms. Ralston, can you go ahead and give Mister Moretti? Permission to share? You should have permission, I think. Will it work now? There we go, oh, that was something else. There we go.
There it is. Alright. Okay, so basically the um uh the house is basic, it's considered just a single filming home. Um, right now, we're just um, he is doing uh developing. Um, in addition to the rear of the house and renovating the front of the house as well. Uh and also incorporating um a garage. In the front and I can, the the plan that you see in front of you is existing um right now, it's a single, it's a one story house. Um, consistent of a basement um and a first floor layout um. The. Image in front of you right now is is what we are p- proposing and the proposed layout is basically. The back um. Is the, is the, is the back of the house is the addition, and I believe that's um. That is. Yeah, that is. So a proposed addition in the rear is is basically we're proposing thirty eight feet. Um, by twenty five feet overall. In which that addition will be incorporated to the existing house. The layer on the right, right of you is the proposed first floor layout, where we're incorporating the garage onto the first floor. So basically what we're planning on doing is uh taking up. A section of the existing house on the left hand side and. Creating a garage and infilling a portion of the of the existing basement to create the garage on ground uh at ground level. And for the second floor is a is a full second story addition. On top of the existing structure and on top of the uh proposed uh addition in the rear.
It looks like there might be four bedrooms on that second level?
Uh, yes, that's that, uh, no, uh, on Twitter, there's. Yes, four bedrooms in an office. And it's also a finished um, a finished bonus room in the uh for the attic.
So the. Looking at the gross floor area information that was um entered in on the application, so it lists the first. Existing first floor is one thousand one hundred fifty two square feet. And the proposed first floor is being one thousand two hundred and sixty four feet, so it's just an addition of a hundred and twelve. Square feet, is that correct?
Um. Yes, because the addition is thirty eight by twenty five in the back, in the rear.
Okay, because the first floor, okay, okay, so the first floor gross floor area, you're not including the garage, is that correct?
That's correct.
Ah, okay, that's why I'm confused, okay. Because the second floor is listed as eighteen hundred square feet, and I'm like, how does that fit with that?
Yeah, that's it.
Um, and then you have the attic area listed as nine hundred forty square feet?
Um. Um, yes, fin uh, yes, that that would be approximate, yes, finished, yes.
That's finished um. So for our zoning bylaw for the definition of a half storing. It has to be less than fifty percent of the floor area below, which has. Seven feet from the finished floor to the underside of the roof structure. So I would just need you to confirm that you meet. That number, so that number would effectively be around nine hundred square feet. So I don't, I don't know, there's not information in the application that would clarify if you meet that requirement or not. So just.
And so you you, I'm sorry, you, the the height of the of the uh the finish that cannot be more than seven feet, you said?
Yeah, so seven feet from the finished floor to the underside of the roof structure.
Okay.
The rafters.
Does that um, is the raft is considered would be the um. Is that the ceiling, would that be, would that be considered the ceiling structure like the colotize? Or is that the top of the um?
No, it's from the first place, it's the first place it hits the rafters.
Okay, okay.
So if you have an eight foot ceiling, it's probable, if if the rafters, you know. If there's a a slope portion of the of the ceiling before that or whatever, then. You know, it's it's really from the finished floor to the, to where it meets the roof structure itself.
Okay. I believe we, I believe we took the square footage at the five foot high, uh five foot one high wall areas. Okay, I can confirm that right now, yeah.
Do you have um the site plan?
Um, I do not have the site plan, but Nathaniel probably.
Yes, if we could, Ms. Ralston, if you could go ahead and give. Give him the ability to share. Yeah, it should be all set.
Alright, it's on the screen now, as I'm gonna leave it.
There it is.
Did you have specific uh specific questions about it?
Yeah, so um. One is a bu- a question about usable open space.
Yep.
Um, so. In Arlington, usable open space has to be minimum of twenty five by twenty five. And needs to be. It's. Thirty five percent is the, at least thirty five, uh, yeah, at least thirty. Five percent of the gross floor area of the house, so I just wanna make sure that you have that usable open space.
Of the gross floor area of the house?
Yeah.
Is that how it reads? It it is not in terms of the law size?
No, it's quirky.
Oh, well, this plan, the site plan reflects, because it the the not the architectural information reflects the. Oh, well, this plan, the site plan reflects, because it, the, not the architectural information reflects the, it as a proportion of the area of the house.
Ah.
As air of the lot, as an air of the lot.
Yeah.
That's what this reflects.
All right.
I can run the numbers quickly if the I don't have the um GFA numbers in front of me, but um.
Just gonna confirm the, so I'll make sure I gave you the right percentage. Uh, this is the R one. Uh, so it's thirty, usable open space is thirty percent, so the usable open space has to be at least thirty percent of the gross floor area of the house.
Okay, so like I said, um, I, you know, that um, I wasn't aware that had to be of the GFA of the house, uh, this in previous times in town, I know that we've expressed it as the lot area um hasn't been brought to our attention before, uh, so on this plan, it's in, it's expressed uh as a percentage of the lot area.
Okay.
So I mean, obviously, if the GFA is close to the area, which is seventy-six forty, which I'm assuming it, uh, you know, might not be, um, you know, it might be close, but um, yeah, sorry, the that that was reflected on this plan.
And then the lock coverage to the footprint of the building relative to the footprint of the lot, just want to make sure that that is no thirty percent.
And that is the building of the footprint, correct?
Yeah.
If that, that information is accurate and I I've double, triple-checked it uh based on the comments that were given in. Yep, I I even just now just ran the number again and it it checks out, yep. Uh, so it'd be a footprint of eighteen ninety-two square feet over seventy-six forty lottery.
Got it, okay. Are there questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hobbie.
Um, on the building height, um, on one of the sheets, it had the it said thirty-five feet on architectural drawings, um, on the proposed in the um, in the application, it says thirty-three feet. Um, so wanted to get clarification there, um, and also the measurement from the average grade would establish that, right? And also want to make sure that the basement ha- is not a story, how those calculations have to be shown on the drawings.
Um, that's correct, the basement won't, is not considered a story because it's um, the basement is fully in the, in the ground, there's no there's no section of the basement that's within fifty percent of the grade.
Got it. But the average grade, uh, would would be the average grade, um, because if I see the sheet, uh, the elevation sheet here, um, A one point three. Um, average grid, it says approximate grade, which I assume is the average grade and then shows the thirty-five feet to the highest point of the roof.
Correct. The highest point to the roof on the average grade is is, well, the grade of the uh, the ground on the site is, is pretty much uh flat, it's pretty level. Uh, per se, so I would say thirty-five feet would be comfortable.
The thirty-five feet is correct, um, and not the thirty, thirty-three feet that's on the application.
Um, correct, and well, my, the drawings show thirty-five feet at the um, at the, at the, at, at the, at the tallest, correct?
Okay.
From the grade.
Other questions from the board? I would ask uh, Mr. Cataldo, if there's any specific features of the land, of the uh stormwater management plan that the board should be aware of.
Yep, sure, I can run through that, so um this particular property, I um had corresponded with the town engineer on what would be appropriate to address the stormwater, so um, it is subject to stormwater um management in accordance with the um local bylaw for stormwater, the local ordinance. So this is a very tight lot, as you can see pretty uh clearly, and the space available for drainage infrastructure is very limited. Um, the building is pretty much right up against fifteen-foot side setbacks, so most drainage utilities need about a ten-foot setback to a structure, so that kind of limits the sides of the property. Similarly, in the front, there also needs to be available space for uh the garage, um, the utilities of water and sewer, uh, so that limits the area for um stormwater to be provided basically in the rear of the property. Like I said, maintaining setbacks to the foundation to property lines, um, so in my correspondence with the town engineer, um, I basically gave him a description of this, uh, the constraints on the property, another one being included is a very shallow depth to the water table, and although this although the scope of this project technically triggers a major per- a major permit under the regulations, which would be full compliance with the stormwater management handbook, um, the town engineer agreed to relent to approving this plan in um in compliance with the minor uh regulations, which um, if you're not familiar with it, basically takes an increase in impervious area and it corresponds to a storage requirement for the stormwater. Um, so in this case, we have the calculation on the, on the plan, uh, there's a certain volume that you have to retain, so basically, we're maxing out the available space, considering the um required setbacks to structures and property lines to place a drywall to the rear. And again, it's asked to be a very low, small drywall because of the shallow depth of groundwater, it's only about four feet of groundwater, so in order to have a mound that you wouldn't be able to run stormwater to, uh, has to be kind of low and shallow. Uh, but it it's in full compliance with the standards of a minor permit, really the only threshold difference, it doesn't go above the square footage, but it would be a major permit because it requires a building permit, basically, so usually minor permits would be for only like paved areas, something that you don't need to go to the building department for, but they were able to make an exception in this case, and I do have an email from the town engineer confirming that the work presented on this plan, um, is approvable, um, you know, I I sent him the final version of it, but that this meets um the requirements and he's okay with granting it, uh, granting a waiver. So basically, I know there's a lot of talking to kind of explain the backstory, but basically this drywall will uh receive the runoff from the addition as well as the back half of the roof area, it'll be routed with gutters and downspouts connected to the drywall, um, and like I said, it re- it provides storage and infiltration for um the corresponding um increase in impervious area that the local uh bylaw requires. Um, that's kind of like the rundown in many words, but if you have a specific question about it, I can answer them.
Are there any trees in the area where the new drywall is going?
Nope.
Okay. Are you aware of any trees on the site that are going to be impacted by the addition?
No, we've located all the trees, so if you kind of look at the heavy dots on the plan, those are the ma- uh mature trees that we located. In the area where the the addition is going is all open lawn, um, you know, there is a tree line that comes from trees that are on abutting properties that are large, but there's no tree clearing needed to construct the addition or the drywall.
Please, so one of the other criteria for a large addition is the proximity to budding structures. So I had wanted to just briefly so this is just the plan in Google. Google Maps, so this is the existing house, um, with the addition off the rear, so um the addition is not going to encroach on either the property at thirty-eight or at number thirty, um, and the abutting neighbor to the rear is a the Belmont Country Club, so uh there's no direct structures there either, so the location of the addition on the lot is will not be uh causing an additional encroachment um on any of the abutters. Are there additional questions from the board? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open this meeting for public comment, public comments taken as it relates to the matter at hand, should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Uh, those members of public who wish to address this application can raise their hand using the re- the raise hand feature in the React tab in the Zoom application, if you're on the phone, you may dial star nine, that'll be called upon by the chair and ask your questions and comments, are there any members of the public who would like to address this application? Which is uh thirty-four Golden Avenue um docket number three eight five five. Don't even see Mr. Moore, okay. Um, so with that, I will close the meeting for public comment. Uh, so what we have before us, this is an application for large addition under section five, four, two, B six. There are a series of conditions, uh, excuse me, findings that the board needs to make um in order to um approve a large addition. The first is, uh, for, are the first three would be under the definition for large addition itself, uh, the first is that the alteration or addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. So this will remain a single-family house, it will be a much larger single-family house, it'll be large, it it does appear that it will end up being larger probably than it's abutting houses. But it is not uh overly so when compared with uh some of the other houses in the, in the neighborhood, this is a very small neighborhood of Arlington, sort of, it's on the other side of Route Two next to the Belmont Country Club, uh, so it's a little bit of an unusual neighborhood. The board needs to consider the dimensions and setbacks in relation to abutting structures and uses. As I noted previously, uh, the the direction of the addition towards the rear uh is not towards any neighbors, um, is is directly towards the country club. And the budding houses on either side don't extend farther back than the existing house, so this would not be encroaching on um on either of their houses. And we need to consider the conformity with purposes of the bylaws, so the purposes of the bylaws stated in section one include, uh, this thing is, uh, let me go ahead and just pull that up because I have it open. So includes such things as to lessen congestion of the streets, conserve health, provide adequate light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, encourage housing for persons at all income levels, uh, to encourage an orderly expansion of the tax base by utilization development and redevelopment of land made with reasonable consideration to the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses. Um, also to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, other requirements, protect and preserve open spaces and natural resource. Uh, conserve the value of land and buildings and infer the most appropriate use of land in the town. So I think in consideration of those uh purposes, this addition given its side with, size would uh still conform to the purposes of the bylaw. And then the board would also need to make the standard required findings for a special permit, which are under section three, three, three. Before I go into those, I did just want to quickly um touch on a couple of quick things. So we, we need the applicant to confirm um that they comply with the requirements for usable open space. Um, I was going to recommend that the board consider that as a condition of the granting of the, of a special permit. And if they can't meet it, then they're obviously going to have to come back, but otherwise, uh, otherwise we would need to continue. Similarly, we need the applicant to confirm that uh they meet the requirement for a half-story um in terms of the gross floor area under seven feet um in that attic floor being less than fifty percent of the floor below, so we also need that information, I think, um, unless the board is uncomfortable, we could uh also do that as a condition. We did take a look at the building height question, um, the documents uh supersede the application, so that would be okay. Um, and we reviewed the the stormwater and the trees and we talked about the um conditions for our large addition. Uh, so with that, um, the required findings under section three, 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 the first is the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. Uh, so the adverse effects in this context would just be it, you know, it occupies more of the land, um, it will have marginal impact on the uh the utilities um that the town relies on, however, this will provide uh valuable living space for residents to the town, it does have a a stormwater management plan which will address any possible stormwater concerns. And uh otherwise, the, the recommendation apart from its size is uh in compliance with the zoning by law. The requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit, the district, as we noted, this is allowed by special permit under section five, four, two, B six. Requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. This is a, a convenient to the public because the, this provides for an orderly expansion uh of property in town, it allows for the in, an increase in the from a, uh, from a financial point of view, it provides uh an increase in the um uh, in the tax base for the town, but it also provides uh an opportunity for uh people to live in town and live in a property that uh meets the, the sort of the newer needs of families in town, uh, while it's unfortunate to see a s- a small, you know, relatively affordable property go away, we will be uh, you know, this is a unfortunately, it's sort of the way that things are and um this seems to be a, a well-thought-through project. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety, um, won't affect pedestrian safety, I don't think there's actually sidewalks in this neighborhood. But also, uh, the addition being away from the street, um, this also provides for a drive, uh, excuse me, a uh uh garage space uh for the vehicles which the property doesn't currently have. Should not overload any public system, it's a minor increase to the uh plumbing and electrical requirements, as we noted, it doesn't have any impacts on this, on the stormwater systems of the town because it has its own system. The special regulations for the requested user fulfilled, those are the special requirements for a special uh special permit under a large addition, which we already reviewed. Requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. So this is currently a, a, a small neighborhood, uh, mostly small houses, uh, backs up to the golf course, does have a larger uh development at the end of the street. The the addition, the large addition, uh, sort of the reimagining of the house. Well, as a single-family house, should not impair the, the character of the district. And it maintains the, the store, the line of houses along the street, so it should maintain uh the integrity as well. Uh, requested use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare, there's nothing detrimental about the, this proposal and will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, where it is a single family in a single-family district. Um, it will not uh create an unnecessary or unusual use. Are there any questions or comments from the board in regards to those findings? Seeing none. Should the board vote uh this evening to close, we have three standard conditions, um, which we actually haven't written into the record yet tonight. Uh, the first is the plans and specifications approved by the board for the special permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. There shall be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. Second is that the building inspector is hereby notified there to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time they determine that violations are present. Building inspector shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning bylaw and under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty-one D of the Massachusetts general laws and institute non-criminal complaints, if necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section three point one. And condition number three, that the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to the special permit grant. Um, would also include the, the, the condition that the applicant is to provide a certified plot, a certified site plan indicating and dimensioning the areas of the existing proposed site that comply with the requirements for usable open spaces indicated. of the existing proposed site that comply with the requirements for usable open space as indicated in section two of the zoning bylaw of the town of Arlington to the inspection services department for review and approval. Um, and also that the applicant is to provide an attic floor plan indicating and dimensioning the areas of the proposed attic floor meeting the height requirements of a half-story per section two of the zoning bylaws of the town of Arlington, including the required calculation confirming compliance with the half-story requirements to the inspection services department for review and approval. Um, are there any other conditions that, uh, or it feels would be appropriate? Hearing none. Um, I would ask Mr. Handland if he would be willing to coordinate the production of a decision in favor of approval of this application? Thank you very much. Um, and with that, uh, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington closes the public hearing for docket three eight five five thirty-four Golden Avenue.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Handland. So this will be a roll call vote of the board to close public hearing, uh, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Handland?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are closed on thirty-four Golden Avenue. Thank you all very much. Uh, so we will, uh, vote on the, the final decision at our subsequent meeting, which is on July eighth.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
So with that, we go back to our agenda, and item two on our agenda is the, uh, vote on the decision for two oh eight Jason Street. Uh, this is a decision that was prepared by Mr. Handland, distributed to the board for questions and comments. Uh, are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the decision for two oh eight Jason Street? Seeing none. Uh, move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve and adopt the written decision in docket three eight five one two oh eight Jason Street, which grants a variance from the front yard setback requirements of section five four two A in the zoning by law.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Handland. So vote of the board, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Handland?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is approved. Item three, uh, the vote on docket three eight five three, number three Inverness Road. This is a decision that was written by Mr. Branowski, distributed to the board for questions and comments, final version posted yesterday. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the, uh, decision on three Inverness Road? Seeing none, I move the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington to approve and adopt the written decision in docket three eight five three three Inverness Road, which grants a special permit under section five three nine D in the zoning by law.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Handland. The roll call vote of the board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Handland?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
And, and seeing as Mr. Branowski wrote the decision, I'm going to give him the right to vote on this application, and it's seems only fitting. So, Mr. Branowski?
Oh, yes, it'd be a little weird if I didn't, I guess. It would not show very much, uh, based on my workmanship.
So, item four on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our June tenth hearing, uh, so these were prepared by Ms. Ralston, uh, submitted to the board, questions, comments. Are there any final questions or comments in regards to the minutes from our June tenth meeting? Seeing none, I move the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington to approve the minutes from the June tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the board. The second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Handland. So vote of the board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Handland?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that is approved as well. That was the last bit we had. Um, so our beautiful July eighth that was going to have nothing to do, we now have a bunch of things on July eighth, so uh, we will be back, uh, Ms. Ralston, I believe, will be on vacation, so, um, there will be others assisting in her absence, but we hope she has a lovely time away. Um, and then we have a few, we, it looks like we have four or five items stacked up for, uh, July twenty-second as well, so enough to believe we're already into July. Alright. Well, with that, I would like to thank everyone for their participation in tonight's meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting. I would especially like to thank Colin Ralston, Mike Champa, Mike Cunningham, Jaclyn Monson, and Tim Ross for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note, the purpose of the board's recording the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of its proceedings. It's our understanding the recording made by ACMI will be available, excuse me, on demand at ACMI dot TV within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town. Arlington dot M A dot U S. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Uh, sorry, that was Mr. LeBlanc. Uh, so vote of the board to adjourn, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Handland?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are adjourned.